All right, we'll get started here, folks, at six o'clock. Georgetown Scott County Planning Commission, July 8th, 2021 meeting. Starting off, commission, under commission business, approval of the June invoices. I'll need a motion.
I won't make a motion if we pay.
Motion by Mr. Stone.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Smith. Stephen Smith, I have to make sure I do that.
Two Smiths.
We have two Smiths. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion passes. For the record, Mrs. Singer's running late. My understanding, she is on her way. So, at this time, and then we still have one vacant seat, which is a city appointment. Next on the agenda, under item B, is approval of the June 10th, 2021 minutes. I need a motion for that.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Vest, second by David Smith, or Dan Smith, I'm sorry. Yeah, thanks. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Approval of the July agenda. We do have some changes under postponement and withdrawal, which I'll cover under, under item D, but I need an approval of the July agenda for tonight.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Mifflin.
Second.
Second by Steve Smith. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Items for postponement or withdrawal. We've got a couple on here. Under ZMA 2021-12, the Singer property, it's a public hearing, that is being postponed. Yep, and then also, in addition, we had PSP 2021-20, the Village of Lanes Run, Phase Three, Section Two. It's amending the preliminary subdivision plant to reduce the minimum lot width from 65 to 60 feet. Amend open space layout and remove proposed alley system within Phase Three, Section Two, of a previously approved plat located at Village of Lane Run, east of Lanes Run Creek. That is also being postponed. So if you're here for either of those two, we'll hear, hopefully, the Village of Lanes Run next month, and I think, Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, the Singer property, probably not next month, or are we trying?
Next month.
Next month as well, so we should hopefully hear both those next month. So again, if you're here for those, those will be postponed till next month. Okay, any other changes, Joe? Or is that it?
No other changes.
Okay, so, got those items for postponement and withdrawal. We don't need a motion on that, right, Charlie?
No.
All right, consent agenda. I don't think we had any thing that's eligible for consent agenda this month, so we'll try to make a long meeting short. We'll jump right into old business. PSP 2021-10, Cherry Blossom Village, Phase Nine, a preliminary subdivision plat to create 18 new lots located in Cherry Blossom Village. Joe? Passing down to Charlie for him. Charlie. I should have brought one of those for myself.
Okay.
We're going to do the else.
That's what it is.
Y'all ready? Can you see the screens? The new screen behind?
I'm sorry, oh, you know what? Let's do this before you start, Joe. Charlie Perkins, our attorney, is going to swear everybody in, so if you're, if you plan on speaking tonight, please stand up, raise your right hand, and Charlie's going to swear you in. Thank you both.
Thank you. Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to make tonight to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief? Thank you all.
Thank you. And for the record, Mrs. Singer's here, and I apologize, I forgot to mention, Mr. Dewan Garrett's not here, so, yeah, for the record, he's, he's absent at this point. Okay, go ahead.
All right. Get started. This is a request for preliminary subdivision plat approval for Cherry Blossom, Phase Nine, which is, are you looking for some more?
Well, I was just looking why the TV's not on there.
The TV is off. We have the screen behind me.
Screen, so anybody?
We've got two screens here.
Oh, that's what I didn't see, okay.
Yeah.
I didn't see those, so I'm like, all these poor people have to turn around, but they can see.
Yeah, if it doesn't work in the future, we could probably hook that one up, but hopefully this will work.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is a request for preliminary subdivision plat approval for Phase Nine of Cherry Blossom, which is a phase in the single-family area of Cherry Blossom, off Sunnydale Drive, which is an extension, which is a stub road now between Holes Seven and Eight, kind of in the northern, well, in the back, the back half of Cherry Blossom. It backs up to Old Oxford Road. This prop, this area of Cherry Blossom is owned to R1CPUD. It does have some flexibility and setbacks, but the minimum lot size in R1C is 750 square feet, minimum lot width is 70 feet. The request is for 18 lots. These largely follow what was approved in the original master plan and subdivision plat, so there's, there's no issues with them needing variances of any kind. They meet a minimum lot size for the district. The area of the lots are shown on the screen. If you pass the clubhouse, go over the bridge, pass the clubhouse, and follow the street around to the back, this, this area is, Sunnydale kind of goes off to the left as you, as you bend around that last road. This area showed a connection to Old Oxford Road on the original master plan. They are intending to, is my understanding, to make that connection, but they have a couple requests or amendments to the original conditions of approval at zone change and at the, at the master plan approval. Essentially, all the lots meet all our requirements. We have absolutely no issues with the lot layout or the lot sizes arrangement. Our only concern is with those original conditions of approval. Condition at zone change approval was that 150 lot, at 150 lots, they have to provide a second connection. It's a little bit vague as to, you know, what, what was meant by that, because this was developed in multiple phases, and there were multiple entrances approved originally. Our understanding was the intent of that was that the connection to Old Oxford in the rear be made at 150 lots. Regardless, at the plat stage, preliminary plat stage, they added the condition spelling out what the improvements to Old Oxford needed to be, and that was widen it along the frontage of the subdivision to 22 feet, which is 11 feet from center line. So they're only required to widen their side of the road, so that's 11 feet from the center line, pavement width, and then ditches and shoulders. So that wa, that was the condition for the, for the width of the road widening. As far as when the connection, connection needed to be made, 150 lots was what the, the original zone change stipulated. As this was developed in phases, there were some lots developed on the, kind of on the west side of the, of the bridge that was originally, that was built over Lanes Run Creek to reach the clubhouse, so I think you all are familiar with where the bridge is. So there were some lots on that side, and then the lots started to be developed on the other side. With the last approval of Phase Eight, which occurred in 2007, a condition was added that any future lots after that needed to make the connection to Old Oxford. At that point of, of Phase Eight approval, it brought the total lots approved on the other side of the bridge, so on the east side of the bridge, to 180. So they're over the 150, but they're under the 200, which is in our sub-rags for single-family subdivisions. If you're over 200, you need a second connection. So, I don't know if the original zone change condition split the difference, because there's a multifamily section and a single-family section, or whether that changed, that, that section of our sub-rags changed between approval and, and development of the, of the subdivision. But in any case, with Phase Eight, there was a condition that future phases make, make the connection and the road improvement. So, that's essentially where we are. The applicant is requesting to make the connection to Old Oxford, but to not do all the improvements along the frontage, but only do improvements in the lot area, in the area of lots, since they don't own the golf course, they don't want to have to do the improvements along the golf course frontage. In addition, they're asking to waive the turn lanes and gate this entrance, or make it a limited access in some, some capacity. So it won't be a full in-out entrance, it'll be controlled by a gate or some other means to limit access, so they're asking to waive the turn lanes as well. And the reasoning is, is, one, that gate, it's going to be gated, so there won't be cut-through traffic, there won't be people coming in off Old Oxford that'll need to decel, need a lane to turn in, to get into the entrance. And also, they plan to make a future connection either to Lexus Way, and I've, by way of background, Lexus Way is a project that was introduced after Lexus, after Lexus Way was built to serve Toyota, and through public kind of interest and input, we added to our comp plan, and Lexus Way Extension would be an extension of Lexus Way from Cherry Blossom through Pleasant Valley, Cherry, Cherry Blossom area to Old Oxford Road, so it would provide a connector road, connection from this area of town back to the west side of town and to the interstate. So, that project has been in the works since the 2017 comp plan. It's not funded, but it is in the planning stages. And it's essentially in this, in the area shown on this slide, it's, there's a corridor there about 250 feet wide, because there's a five-acre lot, or I think there's a 10-acre lot on one side, five-acre lot on the other side, 250 feet wide. The owner, Cherry Blossom owns a section of land, and then there's, there's another section that's part of Payne's Landing, or Payne's, Payne's Crone, Pleasant Valley. That's been developed or approved for apartments that owns, a section is dedicated right away, and then the city owns the section in, in the floodplain. So there's only a couple property owners, so it's going to go, once funded and, and designed, it's going to go somewhere in that corridor, we don't know exactly where, but it abuts the golf course, so the applicants are proposing to connect to that road once it's built. And also, my pointer won't work, but also, there's some additional lots on the north side of the eighth hole on the golf course that were planned for lots, and, and they could make a connection there if Old Oxford, I mean, if, if Lexus Way Extension isn't built by the time they get to those lots. So, staff's position is that they should be required to either make the road improvements or provide a surety of some kind for the road improvements along the whole length of Old Oxford. We don't feel like the golf course, the golf course takes up, you know, a large portion of the frontage, it's part of the overall development, it wouldn't make sense to widen just a short section and then not do the whole length. So, staff's position is that they, they need to require, not, you need to do those improvements or provide a surety. And then at a minimum, if there's not a full entrance, I, I guess we're open to other options, but they need some type of emergency access, because that bridge cert, I mean, that's the only access to over 180 lots at this point. They need to provide some type of emerg, at least emergency access from Old Oxford to serve those lots. So that's, that's staff's position on those two points. I know we've talked about this for a long time, we've met with the applicant. We're open to, to other options, if there's something that would work for the Planning Commission, but we really need to see the, the Old Oxford improvements done. It's been over 20 years since the, the subdivision was approved and construction began, so at some point, we need to see that work done. We'd like to see Lexus Way Extension done as well, so, I mean, if, if we could pick and choose, I would, I think I'd prefer to see Lexus Way Extension built. That would be my priority, but we do need to see something happen on Old Oxford, and at least an emergency connection to the subdivision. So, staff is recommending approval of these lots, since they meet, they follow what was originally shown on the, on the original master plan. If they do make a gated, I've added condition number two, and it's kind of, it's kind of long and drawn out, because it was my understanding that they wanted to make the connection with a gate, and if they do provide a gate, it needs to be either a private, I mean, that section of road will have to stay private, or if it's dedicated to the public, to the city of Georgetown, if it's built to public standards and dedicated, or asked for dedication, they'll have to get city council to approve of the gate, and they may need a turnaround for the gate for garbage trucks and other large vehicles that come down there, or a way for them to, to be able to exit. And if they don't do the gate, we'll have to evaluate it when, at that point, and they may need to do the turn lanes as well, if it's going to be a full entrance, but we can, we at least waive that review until we know whether it's going to be gated or not. The rest of the conditions are, are standard conditions on plats. They'll have to submit construction plans for the road, review those, get those approved, build all the infrastructure before it can be platted, and the preliminary plat is good for two years, with an opportunity to extend it one time. Otherwise, it, it will expire, and they'll have to come back and, and get it re-approved by the Planning Commission Board.
Any questions for Joe, by the commission?
Joe, you're saying that the developer, because the, most of the road is beside the golf course, when the original development was approved, was the golf course and the residential development, the same person, same owner?
I don't know, I can't answer that, I'm not sure. I mean, the land was purchased, I'm sure, as one farm, but whether it was split, at what point it was split or sold off, I'm not sure.
And what I'm getting at is, we run into this from time to time, where you have an original developer, and then they sell part of it off, and then a second or third developer on down the road said, you know, I just bought the lots, I shouldn't be required to take care of the sidewalks or the road connections and that sort of thing. That's why I was asking if originally it was all one deal. And I understand that the developer for lots has nothing to do with the golf course, but it originally was set up that way.
Thank you.
Yeah. Any other questions for Joe? If not, we'll bring the applicants up.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, my name's Glenn Hoskins, I just got here a few minutes ago, so I missed the chest of this forehand.
Do you swear affirm what you're about to say to be the truth, to the best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you.
So I cut the tail end of that, and one question that one of the members had, Mr. Muffin, I believe. I was, I've been involved as a part-owner and as the lawyer, and kind of the guy that does all the work behind the scenes for this entity since day one, and I'm not sure when the actual zone change was, was made, that's prior to the purchase, but it was always, on every development plan I've ever seen, it always had a golf course that was going to be on, backing up to Old Oxford Road. And, and the golf course and the developer definitely are two separate entities, they've got different ownership structures and all that stuff, so. So I, I think the distinction I would make to the, to the issue you raised about, you know, when a builder does lots, you know, is he subject, is he subject to the past promises or not? This, these are not, the golf course is a golf course, it's not, it's not developed as lots in any way, shape, or form, so. It's kind of, you know, that's the purpose of a golf course, to retain the natural beauty of it, so. So other than that, I'll answer any questions, I agree with what I heard from Mr. Kane, I do understand that, where is he? There you are. That, that you've agreed to, that we could make a construction entrance onto Old Oxford. The neighborhood people I've talked to in the association, the homeowner association, feel very strongly, they do not want any kind of a cut-through to, to keep the traffic, to enable the traffic behind Cherry Blossom to get out toward Toyota and all that stuff to the, to Cherry Blossom Boulevard, that'd be a disaster for everybody, I think, but, but we certainly understand the need for construction, for a construction entrance or an emergency exit, so we're willing to do, do the things and agree to the conditions that Mr. Kane presented. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
You said you were involved for a while, were you involved in the 2005, when that amended master plan was?
I was probably involved, I'm not sure, I remember what was, what that 2005 was about.
Did I understand that correctly, that amended master plan, even though it didn't have approval, did show that access?
Yes.
Okay.
That, that type of thing was normally taken care of by the engineers, and I wouldn't be asked to come up to a meeting, a formal meeting.
Any questions for Mr. Hoskins?
One question, you say, as, as you would propose it, that that entrance would be strictly a construction entrance, or, or it would not be a gated?
Well, I think what Mr. Kane had recommended, it was to be a construction entrance or an emergency exit, gated, whatever it needs, but, but not a wide-open entrance, so the people on the backside, and all these new subdivisions coming, I could cut through the subdivision, that was, that's, that's not our, that's not our intention, not, not my understanding, anyway.
Monday at the workshop, we talked about it, and, and there were a couple people that talked about having it wide open, having the turning lanes, doing the widening of Old Oxford, because anybody who's here, lives in that area, knows Old Oxford's just terrible, period, and there's no better way to put it. Are you opposed to having that wide open? Because, I mean, you can't speak for the residents, unless they're here and they want to talk and say they do want it closed. The problem I feel like I have with that is, we have a couple of those, and they are emergency access only, whether they're with keypads or key fobs or whatever, and just to keep closing these subdivisions like that, some people may need, want to get out that instead of driving all the way to the front of the golf course, and, and it's hard to speak for everybody.
How do you control the cut-through traffic? That, there's not, they don't live there.
You don't, it's a neighborhood. You got, I'm, I'm in Bradford, we got three entrances and exits, and I have my choice of which one I want to use, and, and I think it should be the resident's choice. And if you only have one with an emergency exit, then you only have one. And all of a sudden, if the bridge goes out, to Joe's point, and if you're not a fire department to open that gate up, all of a sudden, the neighbors could be...
Well, this would be the only one that I, that I think we've got on the drawing board.
No, there's, well, no, I mean, you personally, yes, but there's several more around town that have emergency gates only, and I personally don't like them.
This is worth sailing into this project after 20 some odd years, so this should be the only one we'll be asking for.
Are there any residents here that would?
Okay.
Speak to that?
Come on up, Mr. Lusby. Thank you. State your name and address for the record.
David Lusby, 121 Lockupon Drive in Cherry Blossom. I, I am familiar with the request tonight, and in speaking with one of the, I guess, Mr. Hoskins' partners, there is the proposal for future development, and the way I understood it was that they were requesting these additional 18 lots, and if this was granted, then at a future phase, they would make a connection either to Lexus Way or perhaps out to, out to Old Oxford, but not with this particular phase. They're just wanting to get this, these 18 lots developed, have a construction entrance that does make sense, perhaps Old Oxford gets improved while they're developing these next 18 lots, and then if there is another connection with the other phase, but they would agree to an actual connection in the future, just not with this particular phase. Am I saying that right, Mr. Hoskins? Yeah. Yeah, yeah. As a resident, we, we under, I understand that, and certainly see the benefit of that as well, and certainly support that request. Lexus Way is about a $6 million project, and the widening of Old Oxford is a $6 million project, so we got $12 million worth of projects, and that's before the costs went up. The other thing that I would, would share with, with this, this group, and I'm sure you're aware of this, if it was in 2005, I guess, when the plan was amended, and I know things are agreed to during those events, but a lot of things have, have changed, and, and, you know, 2007, eight, nine, 10, the housing market crumbled, it was certainly impacted here. There've been a lot of neighborhoods in Georgetown that didn't, didn't make it, developers folded, banks took over their properties, and Cherry Blossom weathered the storm, they hung in there. And some of these other projects that did fail have been picked back up by somebody else, they've come back to you all, they've come back to the council, and they've asked for different things, they've asked for special things that, that weren't in the original proposal, and we've given it to them, you know? And I guess the way I look at it, you've got somebody that's, that's hung in there from the start, they've put their own money out of their pocket to keep the golf course sustainable, to keep it alive, to make the development work, and to me, it seems reasonable to give them an additional 18 lots, try to get some momentum behind them, and then make the connection in the future, and that's, that's just my perspective as a resident.
Thank you, Mr. Lusby.
Yes, sir.
And Joe, you all, the, from a planner's standpoint, you're okay with the gated access for emergency services only, you think that meets the intent of the additional entrance?
I think as a, I guess as a backup plan, as a worst-case scenario, yes. I mean, I, I think that's, that's what we need at a minimum. I'd like to just get clarified or have the board be clear on what is being requested, because as part of my staff report and the application we had, that I wrote the staff report on, they were going to make the full, full road improvements and make the connection paved.
Including that, when you say full road improvement, do you mean the turn lane too, or just the?
No, no, no. No turn lane, but build the Sunnydale, make the connection with Old Oxford fully paved, and then put a gate. So, I mean, if the request is just to do a construction entrance and not make the full connection, then we need to clarify that, or we'll be back next month or in a couple months again. So, I guess that's all I want to get clarified before you vote, is what you're voting on, because the staff report is based on the full road connection and then a gate. So the emergency access would be a gated, controlled access on a fully paved road, and I guess I'm okay with that. I mean, I, that's not ideal, I would rather not see a gate, and I would rather see a full entrance, but, I mean, I think we need it at a minimum. If they're going to make the connect, some connections later, then I think that would satisfy the safety.
And I wonder even, from the traffic on Oxford Road, is it better to maybe have the limited access for now until there is that future connection? Otherwise, it's going to make the problem maybe even worse until the Lexus Way connection is there, or?
Did you also say, though, when you were presenting this, that the last phase was the, part of the last phase approval was, next time you come to us, we need that second connection?
Yes, yeah, that was.
Even though that was in '05, I...
'07.
Or '07.
'07, it was platted, may have come to the board earlier, but, yeah.
And maybe you can't, I don't know, the intent of the guideline around the second entrance at certain, and we had this discussion back with the Harbor Village thing, too. The intent, maybe it would just be speculating at this point with this, was it the traffic flow from the subdivision, or was it emergency services? I just trying to understand from my standpoint.
It's both. I guess the primary concern is emergency services, but connectivity is a big, it's a bigger one in the city, less, less so in the county, but just connectivity is up there.
Any other questions for Joe?
It's not, not so much a question, it's just a comment. I think everybody, if Lexus Way corridor can be completed, I think that's the best, like, like you said, that's, that's the best solution, but I don't know how long that'll be. It might be, it might be two or three years, and it might be 15 years, it's hard to say. But in the meantime, I think I need to try to at least make some, make some improvements to Old Oxford and, and the places that, that really need it. Anything would be a, some, some improvements have been made already, but I think there's, there's plenty of room for, plenty of room for more improvement, and it'd be nice to get a few things squared away on that road, because that's, that road's already there, and people are using it every day. Lexus Way hadn't, Lexus Way corridor hadn't been, hadn't been started, and we don't know when it will start. Need to maintain what we have.
Thanks, Stephen. Any other questions for Joe? Matt, can you grab a few more chairs, maybe? There's a lot of people, it looks like a few people in the hallway. I don't know if there's some in there or that back room.
I'm not sure if there are many more chairs.
All right, appreciate it, though. Thank you.
I've got a statement or question for Mr. Hoskins. In the bottom left-hand corner is hole number five. And so you've got families that, that surround that, and right now, they have to go all the way through the subdivision and go out the front gate. If you had a, a gate that allowed them to go out, but others not to come in... If you had a gate that allowed them to go out, but others not to come in.
Thank you.
It looks like to me that would be beneficial also.
You talking about people that live down here in this corner?
Yeah, that whole loop, that bottom left-hand corner.
The only way they can get there is to go out a long way to the, to the horseshoe.
Thanks, Matt.
Right down by the clubhouse and out to-
Right, right.
Regular, regular Oxford Road. And I can't think why anybody with the right mind that's wanting to go towards town or the interstate or go to work or Toyota, wherever they happen to go, would want to come out this way and get on Old Oxford Road.
Well, I can. Because you go right down there and turn left on Connect the Road and get on the interstate instead of having to go through all of it.
You go through this, you think Connect the, Oxford Road's a mess, you ought to hit Connect the Road during rush hour. It's a real bottleneck out there.
I, I know that. And I'm saying, give them options. I understand you not wanting other people coming through the subdivision, but if you had it so that people could exit out of it and also with a safety factor, could get out, but others, you know, not cut through, I, you know, I understand that, so.
I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the answer would be. I, it's my personal opinion. I think, I don't think many people would always want to go out farther away to their destination and come in Oxford, Old Oxford Road, enter Connect the Road and you get right back in the same mess they're trying to avoid and they drive three times further to get there. But you never know.
Yeah, but if those people leaving that part of the, that's on the map there and you connect that to Old Oxford, the access to Lowe's and McDonald's, I mean, that's a lot quicker than going all the way through the golf course.
Is that the text was made down here?
No, if you, if, yeah, with the red line, if you open that up to Old Oxford. And I know, because I used to work at a bank on, on Blossom Park, Blossom Park's a nightmare to get out. It's gotten better because they put those posts up. But the, I mean, it's, it's, Old Oxford's a little better than, than-
So would you be opposed to that, where they could get out and what would be the downside from your perspective? Where they could, the residents could at least get out, if there wasn't any traffic from there, there'd be no impact?
Every one resident that wanted to take that as an alternative way to get down to Lowe's, I mean, you have 12 or 20 other people that want to come from other parts of the county toward Cherry Blossom Way and they want to cut right through the subdivision.
But if it'll only open from the inside to exit, other than the emergency traffic that could come in with the key fob or whatever, so only residents could really get out that way? You couldn't come in that way, other than emergency. I think that's what you're saying, right?
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Mr. Hoskins, do you really believe that a lot of people would use that as an entrance to cut through Cherry Blossom to get to, let's say Walmart?
I think they would, yeah.
Because there's a lot better ways than to go all the way through Cherry Blossom to get to Walmart.
By the clubhouse and it's a straight shot across to Cherry Blossom Way. We helped finance the purchase of that and we expedited that and then right on, on Cherry Blossom Way. Yeah, they could eliminate the whole, the whole connector.
If I'm any of those homes to the, and I could be wrong on myself of that, Old Oxford, and I want to go to Walmart, I'm sure the heck not going to cut through Cherry Blossom. I'm going to jump on Old Oxford, ride it down and then go into Walmart that way. Worst thing I would want to do is go through the golf course, personally.
Well, that's, that's another reason why we all need to push for the connection of Lexus Way, I guess.
Yeah, but like to, to Mr. Smith's point, it could be two years, it might be 15. If it happens at all, it's not a guarantee it'll happen.
I don't know the answer to that. Sorry.
So just to clarify, so you, I think I heard you say that you were okay with the idea of only being able to exit from it for the residents and an emergency key fob entrance, right? Did I hear you say that or not? You said you didn't know why people would use it, but from your side, other than that, you know?
Well, if it was a key fob thing, I guess the only people that could get into the gate would be people who lived in this eighteen lot subdivision.
I think you're talking about a key fob. What I was referring to was the emergency services key fob.
Of course, the emergency vehicles would be able, now to get out, I don't know, we hadn't thought that through. I don't know if it's one of those things, if you drive up to the gate automatically.
That's what I was thinking, but it could only go out and not in, I'm sure. It's feasible.
Mr. Lusby has those types of gates on all of his storage facilities where you've got to have a code or something to get in, but just pull up to the gate to get out. And so that's all I was saying. You know, those people could, could get out, access it if, if they wanted to. If they wanted to drive through the subdivision, so be it, at least. And again, like the staff has pointed out, we have a catastrophe on that bridge coming into Cherry Blossom and you've got all those people trapped in there and no one can get out or in. You know, you have a-
At least you do have a, a second way out.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
And in emergency, I'm sure you could default it to just stay open.
Yeah, you could. In emergency, you could keep it open, I'm sure.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Hoskins. Anybody else have any questions, comments, thoughts? Anybody here in the audience that want to speak, come on up to the lectern. Oh, yes, for the record, DeJuan Garrett has arrived.
He is in the building.
Oh, would you mind coming up to the, we need-
Well, I wanted to point out something.
Well, yeah, do it from the microphone and you can turn around if you don't mind. Just because we record it and it needs to be on record. Thank you.
I'm Tanya Buck. I've lived out at Old Oxford for 25 years. And that Lexus Way, that's our sub, that's our house right there. That's coming directly, our driveway's right across from Lexus Way. So not everybody wants Lexus Way. But anyway, with the traffic, I think there should be, if, if there needs to be, that red thing needs to be open. Because Old Oxford is, as you mentioned so eloquently, it's packed. There's people using it all the time. There's no difference than Cherry Blossom having that open. And to your point, no, nobody's going to go through the golf course to go to Walmart. They're going to go out Connect the Road. But I do think some, some modicum of Cherry Blossom wanting eighteen more homes needs to have an entrance into it, just like Old Oxford. Because everything's funneling through Old Oxford and it's not getting updated. You know, this is just passing, kicking the can to Lexus Way and it needs to be open. So that's my two cents. I don't know if my husband wants to say something, so.
Can I just clarify, when you say open, you mean fully open, not gated access?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Come on up and again, state your name and address for the record.
Brent Buck. Live the same residence she does on Old Oxford Road. And a couple of things, I've just been sitting back and it's new to me here, but what I understand, tell me if I'm wrong, when this was originally built, was there supposed to be two exits coming out of the thing? One close to where the red thing is and one at the bridge on Old Oxford Road? Was I misinformed or was that original? Well, let's stick with the plan. That is coming out to my driveway. Has anybody drove out through there? Have you ever seen how narrow it is? I mean, going to my mailbox, it's, it's pretty freaking dangerous just crossing the road right now. I mean, how many wrecks has been out that place? I mean, right in front of my house, going through the wooden fences, at least three or four. You're right in a loop of a hill. Water comes gushing down through there. Is anybody familiar with that and been with the project? Water standing there, easy hike. If you're going up, and in Lexus Way, it sounds like when I'm sitting here, it's like a given. I was in hopes it wasn't because I don't want a red light at my front door to try and get out of the house. When I bought out there and cows were roaming, before the golf course was ever out there, cows roaming the other side, I did, I, I had no option. When I bought, I had bought five acres, played by the rules. Now, as I look here, we got city, I'm county, we got city. See, we just pick and choose what we want and where we go. Lexus Way, I'm not, I'm, I'm not a big fan of that. If it is, it needs to go one further down the road where you're not in a loop of a hill. Right now, we've got pictures of the construction where the dump trucks are taking the sooner the road. You, you've got high water when it's pouring rain down. There's nothing wrong with putting two exits when other developments throughout the town have multiple entrances. But it doesn't mean putting a superhighway down to the center of, into the country lane on a road where you're coming down a hill on both directions. That's my take on it. And I'm anxious to get more information on this. Is, where is the Lexus Way? From what I'm understanding, is that a given? Is that?
I'm not sure.
I don't think-
Sounds like it's been planned.
Mr. Lusby, would you want to speak on that?
It's not a given. It's, it's a funding issue. I think it's $6 million.
Is it already finalized in terms of the, where it would end up and?
All the properties haven't even been obtained yet.
Okay.
I mean, has, has, Mr. Lusby, has there been any, I don't know, surveys or any safety things looked into where that's coming out?
It doesn't sound like it's officially, you know, because to Mr. Lusby's point, you know, properties hasn't, haven't been obtained yet, but they have a preliminary where they want it to go. It just has to go through all the motions.
It hasn't been approved for that yet, I guess, and-
I mean, even for safety purposes, has anybody actually looked at this?
They'll design it for that. They don't build a road of that size and put it in the bottom of a hole in the curb.
Well, that's, that's good to hear.
And all that out. That, that won't be done. You're right, as it is, that'd be a dreadful place. But I don't know, that would all be engineered, just like right now, the crossing with North 25. That doesn't look anything like it used to.
So there's no timeframe, I guess, as to answer your question. There's no, it's not, we don't know if it's going to be two years or 15.
And I appreciate, and I appreciate that. And so where did the two entrances? What about the entrance down there when you're coming from Lowe's and, and when you dip down where the bridge is? I believe wasn't that one of the original spots for the entrances into the?
Yes.
Close to that. I'm not going to say it's right at the bridge, but close to that. Did that, we just scratched that?
Again, I think it's a funding issue. I think they're still waiting on another $6 million.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak? Sir, come on up and- For the record, state your name and address. And you were sworn in, correct?
Dangwell, 725 Old Oxford Road. Across the street, neighbors from the Bucks. We don't talk a lot, but we have the same problems and same issues. Where he says, where his wife says the point of the arrow is his property, the whole damn triangle is my property. Lexus Drive is going to destroy my property if it ever happens. I'm voting for it not to happen, but I got a real, real small vote. There's another guy on Oxford Road that has some sort of lawn service business. He's going to have the same problem. They're going to destroy his property. So you're destroying two five acre, nice tract. I spent four years finding a place to live in this county that would suit my needs and that was it. Now Lexus Drive, if that, if it happens, and I call the road to nowhere because I don't know where the hell it's going to go. It's going to dead end at Old Oxford and then what do you do? So you're providing an ingress, egress to Old Oxford Road, but you're not, it's not going anywhere else. So it may never happen, as far as I'm concerned. I don't see any reason for it to happen, especially because I live there. But, you know, I, I, I'm not disparaging Cherry Blossom and the developers there. I like them. I know some of them. I know, I know some of the leaders. They had a plan 20 years ago. They set it up. Two entrances, they agreed to that. Putting this barrier up there to inhibit traffic in and out, however you want to think it's going to work, it's not going to work very well. The residents are not going to be happy with it. They can't get out if they want to. The people who live up and down Old Oxford Road can't use it. There's about, there's about 10 homes from the Connect the Road all the way to 922 that have driveways that dump out onto Old Oxford Road. Of course, there's the subdivision there too. But they actually, my driveway, the Bucks, everybody that lives along that road has a driveway that goes to Old Oxford Road. Now, when you leave there, where are you going to go? You gotta go, you go to 922, you're heading southeast away from town. That doesn't do anybody any good out there. If you want to go to town, however you want to go, you're going to have to go to Connect the Road. And anybody tries to get out on Connect the Road where the Old Oxford dumps into it, just got a problem because I've seen cars back up there for 10 minutes because you've got two ways of traffic, a two-lane road. Tremendously high traffic, especially at 4 o'clock, 6 o'clock at night and in the morning also. You've got heavy dump trucks constantly running up and down that road. You've got concrete trucks. Old Oxford Road is getting the daylight beat out of it every day. And you all paved it here about two months ago, an extra 12-inch strip along the edges, which helped a lot. At least my shock absorbers can live through the year now. I'm against everything that's going on here tonight because I don't see any reason for it. And, and I, I agree with Cherry Blossom. They like to escape their plan of having to put in a, an entrance with turn lanes and all that. But that's part of the responsibilities of developer. They agreed to that 20 years ago. And here we are 20 years later, they say, well, we don't want to do it that way anymore. We want to limit access. It's not going to help anybody living in that. A side note, I lived on Gatewood for two years. We hit a closed gate there. Everybody lived there, had a button. Sometimes it worked, sometimes it didn't work. Been on batteries, I guess, I don't know. And at one time, just before I moved there, somebody ran a truck through there and caused $10,000 worth of damage to the gate. So you've got this susceptibility. The gate may be torn down when somebody's mad about it. That's an issue that concerns us. The only other thing I had that I really got up here to talk about, except it's not a complaint. The plan shows a retention water basin is the last lot on Old Oxford Road in the quarter there. Where's that water going to go? I don't see any, I, as Buck says, Mr. Buck said, when it rains two, three, four inches, there's several spots on Old Oxford Road that is two or three inches deep, sometimes even more than that, depending on that, that density of the rain. There's no rain drainage out there at all. The ditches are pretty much filled in over the years. There's no culverts underneath the road to transfer the water across underneath the road. It's a disaster out there and anybody that lives out there can tell you. It's a disaster. I've been out there 10 years. Buck's been there a whole lot longer than I have and I'm sure they attest to the fact that it has always been a disaster. Water goes across in front of my house, over another property. Where it goes there, I don't know. That's not my problem, but- Water goes everywhere out there when it rains. With the construction going on at the road here, this new subdivision. The other day, we had one of three or four inch rains. There was dirty water, three, four, or five inches deep, running down the highway to the creek. Now, that's construction. I know it's only temporary, but there's no water retention, no water plan out there that I've ever seen. And I don't like any of you probably aware of any plan. All we're going to do is hold the water when it rains. There's a, this road's not going to help them any. That water retention basin's not going to help them any. And the overall plan should be, somebody's got to grab their bootstraps and start doing some planning out there and it starts with doing something about that road and the access there. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Can I ask a question? It sounded like from what you said, that your property is part of what the state would have to acquire?
Yeah, all the story, you know, I heard somebody here, Joe, you say 250 feet?
Yes, is that the width of your lot?
Well, no, my lot's about 300. Yeah, I'm, I live in a trailer maybe. I don't know. It's a, I was told, I was told 90 feet. You know, I talked to the mayor back about three years ago. He called me one day about this new plan on Lexus Drive. And at first I thought, whoa, that's going to be something else. And I kind of think, no, that's not, that's not what I want. But nobody's going to ask me that. But he told me 90 feet.
That would likely be the right way they'd need for-
So if they wanted more, then, you know, my house is destroyed because 90 feet would put my edge, my house at the edge of that right roadway. And that certainly is not acceptable to me. And I've never known the state that had to pay to pay full value for any property. They don't do that. So.
Thank you, sir.
I don't want Lexus Drive and I hope you all understand that.
Appreciate it. Anybody else here to speak for or against? If not, I'll open it up for more comments by the commission and/or a vote.
Well, I would like to point out a couple of things for the commission here. Our subdivision development regulations require two points of access for a single-family subdivision with 200 or more lots. Right now, there are 180 out there. And so what the developer did was put 18 more on this development. And to me, that is just a purpose of skirting, not hitting that 200 mark. It leaves it too short. But anyway, anything over, they had agreed that anything over 150 lot threshold, they would have that second entrance, which we waived that last time. And they also committed to making improvements along Old Oxford Road that were proposed for, for this development. And so I, I would be more than happy to approve this with the condition that they make that 11-foot improvement to Old- 11-foot improvement to Old Oxford Road, the length of their property, not just at the road. And I have no problem with a gate there to limit entrance, but have all of the, the residents of Cherry Blossom to be able to exit out of there, not just emergency vehicles. I have no problem with that sort of gate there.
When you said the, you're just talking about the 11 feet, not the turn lane, or?
Well, the 11 feet from the center line, the length of the property there, not just the residential property, not just those lots on both sides of that road there. Because that's what they originally agreed to. And like Mr. Buck said, and, I'm sorry, I forgot your, Mr. Wells, said, you know, they had to build out there according to certain rules, and so, everybody should be held accountable for what they originally agreed to. And that's all I have to say.
Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I have a question, just, I don't know, Ben, do you have any idea what it might cost to make those improvements that we're, that we would be asking for?
We don't discuss that here. That's not our concern, Steve. Why would we, we don't need to?
I'm just trying to figure out what, how significant a project that is.
The most significant part is, is grading. It's, I can go up and mic.
Thanks, Ben.
Ben Krebs, engineer with the planning commission. I think that the most significant part, and I think out there is the grading, getting, it's, there are no, there are no side shoulders. It's trees and stuff right up next to the road. Brent May, have you?
Sorry.
Brent Combs, thoroughbred engineering. I did a real rough, and I emphasized real rough, estimate, and I think it's about $350,000.
Widen that to the limit?
Now, that's all the way from the entrance to phase one of, or those apartments, Old Mill, the Mill, the Mill, starting at the Mill and going all the way to the far end. And I did that based on calculating a per foot price of what's going on on lanes, village lanes run right now. And then just multiply times the length, so it's fairly rough. That's, that was my estimate.
Is that inclusive of the turning lane and everything?
Um.
I guess.
No, but that, that probably wouldn't add, once you're into it, that'd add another 30, 40,000.
You wouldn't need a turn lane if it's only an exit one. I mean.
No, that, that's true. I mean, if we're not gonna make it an entrance and only, like a, like a horse farm gate where you'd pull up to it and it'd just automatically open. Thank you, Mr. Combs. Any other questions, comments, thoughts?
And once again, I'd have to point out, even with those improvements made, you're only making the improvements on one side of the road, so the other side of the road still, let's see, I'm trying to think.
Those are just lane runs.
There's a couple of places that have been improved already, but, but there's still, it's a hodgepodge of things that have happened. But I think anything, any improvement along through there is much needed, especially, like you say, the drainage and the ditching. Doesn't matter how good the road is, if you're standing in water all the time.
So, I need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask just one question?
Yes, sir.
That's been raised by this last bit of the discussion. Is there sufficient right-of-way there for that 11-foot on that one side to be done?
Is, the right-of-way was dedicated years, years ago.
Oh, okay. I've just wondered, 'cause if there wasn't, then we could be requiring something that couldn't be done. No, if there's right-of-way, then very good. That's my question.
Thank you, Attorney Perkins.
Charlie, was yours, was yours a motion before, or you just had to?
I can make it into a motion.
Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
I'll make a motion that PSP 2021-10 be approved with the recommendations by the staff, the nine recommendations by the staff, and that, that second entrance be constructed at this time, that has, that limits access to just the residents of Cherry Blossom.
For exit only.
For exit, for exit only, I'm sorry, yeah.
So, understand the motion is approval of the nine, nine recommended, recommendations, conditions, eight for 18 lots, with emergency gate to enter for EMS, fire, police, and an exit only for the residents requiring like a no fob, it's just like a horse farm gate.
To be in addition to the, what's on number two now, right? That would be in addition.
That's correct.
Correct.
Question, Mr. Chairman, and for Charlie, for the motion, the conditions right now in number three says that they post a letter of credit or cash surety for the widening. You're saying do the widening.
Well, I'm, I'm saying it's gonna have to be done sometime, so they can, they can post it right now.
And I'll kinda ask and say at the same time, but I thought I heard Joe say something about not necessarily deferring it, but, but having final decisions on that at the final. So, what you're talking about is for the purposes of the preliminary, you want the improvement done, and then based on our usual procedure, they could file surety for that, but it would need to be done then before the final was filed, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, is that, is that what you, very good.
And then the last sentence of number two, I think, would come off, because it's not an option anymore that there wouldn't be a gate, correct?
No turn lanes?
Well, no, if the gate is not constructed, is how it starts. Unless we're saying that the gate is the minimum requirement.
Yeah, that, well, no, I think this could be, that could be stricken, because there will be a gate. That's what the approval's for.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Mifflin, and a second.
Recommendations, those are conditions, right?
Conditions, yes, sir. Conditions. And then we got a second by Mrs. Singer. Let's just, I guess, do a roll call. David Vest?
Yes.
And that's to approve.
Yes.
Charlie Mifflin?
Yes.
James Stone?
Yes.
Dwan Garrett?
Yes.
Stephen Smith?
Yes.
Dan Smith?
Yes.
Mary Singer I called. Didn't I call Mary?
No.
No, Mary Singer, sorry.
She meant to say.
And then chair votes no. It's been passed. You can go up there and sign. Thank you. Next up?
Flick like a signature.
Yep, need an autograph. Next on the agenda is PSP 2021-17, the Will Bedun Farm, Michigan subdivision, preliminary subdivision plat for 54 single-family residential lots located at 151 Vine Street. Go ahead, Matt. Floor's yours.
Thank you. The preliminary subdivision plat before you hear is for 54 single-family lots. The applicant is also proposing for open space lots with this application. As you mentioned, it's at 151 Vine Street in Sadieville. The current zoning of the property is R2 PUD, and that was approved in, in 2020.
Matt, before you go on, I just got a text message. Main Street is getting paved, so if you're parked out on Main Street, you're gonna need to move your vehicle. I'd probably recommend behind City Hall in the big parking lot. Otherwise, your car's gonna get towed. So, I'm trying to save people some money. You know what? Let's take a five-minute break, so in case people, just take a five-minute break. Go, Mary.
I told you to park back there, dude.
Well, you said, I think you'd be fine on Main Street. There's lots of fun. Those were your last words, too.
We're gonna get started again and...
That's what I've heard of it.
Um, Matt, you're gonna do the...you're doing this presentation, right?
Oh, geez, boss.
When the commissioner's not back.
Uh, yeah, well, there, he's, he's right there.
Two of them, Mary's not...
No, I'm talking about Mary.
Oh, Mary. Oh, Mary's always late.
(laughing).
For the record. (laughing).
All right. Um, so as, as we were saying, this is a preliminary subdivision plat application to create fifty-four single-family lots, four open space lots at one fifty-one Vine Street. The zoning on the property is R two P U D, and the surrounding, the surrounding properties are zoned either A one, which is our agricultural zone, or R one B, which is a single-family zone. The project site is about sixteen and a quarter acres in size, and access to the, to the site is proposed from, you know, Vine Street and Davis Lane. Davis Lane comes off of Vine Street. There are three variances that we'll, we'll discuss as we, as we get into this project, or as we get through the staff report. So, this, this is the project site here on the screen. You can kinda see the, the railroad running north and south, and, you know, Pike Street and Vine Street coming off of Pike Street there. You can kinda see Davis Lane coming off of Vine Street and then kinda going towards, towards the east, sort of paralleling Vine Street there. So, that would be the primary access to the site. This is the, the zoning of the subject property in the area, so the orange property is, is the project site. The sort of greenish, whitish areas are agricultural zone, and then the yellow is, is the single-family zoning district. Um, I actually don't wanna talk about that right now. Let me go to the site. Okay, so this is, this is sort of a zoomed-in version of the, the preliminary subdivision plat. So, sort of nor the, near the top-left corner of the screen, you've got where, where Vine's, where Davis Lane comes off of Vine Street. So, in this orientation, north is, is actually to your left as you look at both the, the preliminary plat that you have in the, the screen here. And so, there's really two main roads that the applicant is proposing to construct. There's the, the, the main, what I'll consider the main road that's sort of labeled as section one, that comes in and ends at cul-de-sac in the southeast corner of the property. And then, there's the, the road that's sort of labeled as section two that comes and splits off of that road and is shown to, to end in a temporary turnaround. So, there's single-family lots that'll have access to all of those, or to both of those streets. And, and there is, sort of on the area that ends in the temporary turnaround, there is a future multifamily section. We're not really gonna discuss that today. They're not proposing anything with it at this time, but that is sort of what that remainder is, and they, they, you know, may, may come back later with a, a plan to develop that in the future. But th- there is an area that they sort of are still considering for some multifamily development, as they kinda showed on their concept plan when the zone change was approved. So, as I mentioned before, there's sixty, or fifty-four, uh, single-family lots proposed. The typical lot would be fifty feet, fifty-five feet wide and about a hundred and ten feet deep. And so, this, I s- as, as a little bit of background information, when the zone change came through, this body and, and the commission in Sadieville for approval, they did request that it be developed as a P U D. So, what, what that means is that when, when somebody's granted approval for a P U D, there's some flexibility that we typically would allow, as far as some of the zoning regulations, some of the lot sizes, widths, setbacks, things of that nature, in exchange for some sort of, you know, community benefit or, or public good. And, and in this case, that would be the open space that the applicant is providing. So, roughly twenty-four percent of, of the, the site is proposed to be left in open space, and sort of in exchange for that, the applicant is requesting three, three variances to our typical lot design regulations for the R two district. The first being, they would like to reduce the minimum lot size from seventy-five hundred square feet down to six thousand square feet. You know, and I looked at this and, and looked at some of the other urban residential developments that we have here in Scott County. You know, I found that to be a reasonable request. The average lot size in this development would still be pretty close to our seventy-five hundred square foot lot size. The average came out to be just under seventy-three hundred square feet. The majority of the lots would probably be around six thousand fifty square feet, but the average is bumped up mostly by some of the larger lots, in particular at the end of the cul-de-sac, some of the lots around the, the curve where that section two road comes off. And when I calculated that average, I didn't average in the open space lots, so, you know, the, just so we're all clear, I didn't include those in the calculation as far as the average. As far as the, the second requested variance, they did request reducing the minimum lot width from sixty feet to fifty-five feet. Once again, I support that variance. It's a relatively small variance. I don't see how it would adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. It's also a small enough variance. It leaves a wide enough lot, basically, you know, that we wouldn't see an excessive number of variances later on, once homes are being constructed. You know, one of the, I guess, things we, we would like to avoid is avoid hassle for future property owners. You know, if lots become too narrow, you know, then we end up with a lot of applications coming before the Board of Adjustment where people wanna get a reasonable use of their land, but can't because, you know, they're confined by these narrow lots that, you know, that the planning commission approved but allowed the developer to maybe squeeze more, more development out of it, but it ends up having a negative impact later on, on those individual property owners. But with a fifty-five-foot lot, there should still be a reasonable use of the property. It still allows for, you know, decent-sized homes to be built without sort of having that negative consequence down the line. So, I do recommend approval of that one. The third variance that they requested was to reduce the front yard setback from thirty to twenty-five feet. Reductions in the front yard setback is actually something we see quite common in, in the northern part of Scott County when the, the terrain gets a bit more challenging. I do support their variance. It allows some of those houses to be basically built closer to the roadway. And the twenty-five-foot setback still allows us a, a driveway that's a sufficient length that, you know, we shouldn't see a lot of cars parked over the sidewalk and things like that that might impede people's ability to travel. So, I do recommend approval of that, of that variance as well. When we look at the overall, I guess, the, I guess, the other regulations that we would typically look at for a development like this, such as, you know, density, you know, and the other setbacks, they're not really requesting any variances. I find that it does meet our regulations. So, the, the main issues that I wanted to talk about with this project site, if I can go back a couple of slides, and, and issues that, you know, we discussed some at the time when the, when the zone change came before the planning commission, excuse me, is, is sort of the, the primary access to the project site. So, what I have here on the screen i- is an aerial image of, of some of the existing conditions there on, on Vine Street. And what I, and, and I guess, the, the improvements that, I, I guess I'm under the impression that the city is working with their consultant on making to sort of improve the safety of this area. So, if you all remember, when we had the zone change hearing, you know, I, I was concerned and, and the commission was concerned about some of the safety factors as far as how can people get in and out of this neighborhood safely. I think, you know, at the time, earlier that year, maybe the year before that hearing, there had been a house on Vine Street that had burned down, you know, and there wasn't a good way for, you know, fire trucks to get to, or to get around Vine Street. Some of the streets, sections become narrow. Some of the turns are, are tight. So, since that time, the city has been awarded an, an emergency grant to assist with some improvements to the road. My understanding is that a final design isn't, isn't ready just yet, but they are working with an engineering firm to, to prepare that plan. And my understanding is that there will be improvements to widen sort of the eastern side of Vine Street and, and make improvements to Davis Lane. There'll be some work to, to put a, a way for some of the vehicle, or some of the houses on the south side of Vine Street, on, on the western side of Davis Lane, and sort of an access alley, so that some of those houses have access to off-street parking, to kinda take some of the, the parked vehicles there on that western corner of Vine Street, off the street, and then make that western part of Vine Street one-way going towards the railroad bridge. So, um, I guess, some of those, some of those, or I guess those improvements should help to improve the safety of traffic there along, along Vine Street and, and make this development more viable. You know, my, my opinion still is, is that, you know, as, as the conditions exist today, you know, that there's, you know, Vine Street is not safe to, you know, add another large development to. Typically, what we see, you know, as we had with the, the discussion there on, on that last application, typically, the applicant is, is responsible for making the necessary improvements, you know, for the infrastructure to be able to serve, you know, the development that they're creating. In this case, there, i- it is sort of a unique situation where, you know, the city has, you know, obtained that grant funding to try to improve some of the, the deficiencies there with, with Vine Street and Davis Lane. As I mentioned, the city was awar- was awarded that grant, and we, we also just wanted to, I guess, sort of make clear as a separate issue related to the access in roadways, that, you know, we do expect all the roadways that, that would be constructed as part of this development, so those streets, section one and two, to be constructed, I guess, in a manner that, you know, meets the requirements of the subdivision and development regulations. As I note in the staff report, you know, the, the grading, the preliminary grading plan that we got is part of the, the preliminary subdivision plat, plat shows that, you know, it, it looks like it's possible for them to, to be able to meet our, our grade requirements, our slope requirements. The, the plan doesn't show it meeting our, our requirements just now, but it seems like it should be possible, sort of going forward as they move into construction plans and sort of fine-tune some of those details. They should be able to meet those requirements. I, I also wanted to clarify, both for the commission, since we, mostly for the commission, since we do have some, some newer members that were appointed in the last year or so. You know, there is a part of state statute in the part that discusses, you know, land development and, and zoning requirements. And I, I kinda pulled the quote there on the bottom of, of the slide, that "Any street that has been built in accordance with, with specific standards set forth in the subdivision regulations or by ordinance shall be, by operation of law, automatically accepted for maintenance by a legislative body forty-five days after inspection and final approval." So, you know, basically, what, what that says is, you know, if the applicant constructs the streets in this proposed development to the standards that, you know, that have been adopted, then, then the city would ultimately accept, I guess, accept those streets for maintenance. And that, that happens in all of our cities. That happens in Sadie, streets constructed in Sadieville, Georgetown, and stamping ground. It is, it's sort of set for, that process is set forth in state statute.
Matt, even if these two streets
Mm-hmm.
...have a higher standard than, than Vine Street, that, that's okay. The street getting to these might not necessarily meet those standards, but these will be.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's really, i- it doesn't sort of retroactively take
Right.
streets out of the city's, the city's maintenance.
Gotcha. Thank you.
As far as other things that I discuss here in the staff report, we do have canopy standards that apply to, to single-family residential developments. That does require, depending on how many trees on the site, are gonna be preserved through the construction process, that the applicant provide anywhere between ten to fifteen percent canopy coverage. Some single-family developments comply with that by, by planting street trees. Some plant trees in, in the open spaces. I'm, I'm not terribly picky which route. We just wanted to make it clear that that is a, a, something that the, the applicant will have to comply with and, and show how that'll be met, basically, when they do their construction plans. They do show an, a more than acceptable amount of open space for a planned unit development. Typically, we ask for at least ten percent open space. They're showing well over that with, with twenty-two percent, I have here in the staff report. I'm trying to see if I had any other major comments. I, I don't really in the staff report. So, I do recommend approval of the plat, of the preliminary plat with the, the three variances that were requested. And I did kinda wanna go through some of the conditions here before I finish up. So, most of the conditions are standard that we put on most preliminary subdivision plats. Many of them aren't, many of them are really just reminders for, for the applicant to, you know, of, of specific elements of our regulations that they need to comply with. So, you know, for example, that the construction plans and final plat will need to comply with our stormwater requirements. You know, the applicant's not allowed to, to start grading the project site until their construction plans are, have been reviewed and approved. You know, they need to make sure they set up inspection schedules before they start any grading. So, I guess, some of them that I wanted to point out in particular, number seven, you know, the applicant is still gonna have to work with G M W S S as far as how, how the sanitary sewer will get to the project site. The applicant will need to work with the county fire department regarding fire hydrant placement and if they have any other, you know, comments as far as the, the turns in the road or the, the cul-de-sac radiuses. The sunset clause would apply to this project site, so condition nine sort of reminds the applicant of that. There's a, a two-year period. They could apply for a one-year extension if there, if there are extenuating circumstances why, you know, the construction plans aren't approved by then. Condition ten sort of gets to some of the, the road improvements on Vine Street that I discuss in the staff report, and I just wanted to, I guess, since I do still have that concern with the, the safety of the roads as they exist today, I just wanted to add condition ten, that the applicant, you know, can't plot, plat any lots, any buildable lots in the development that could be sold or, or have homes built on them until those road improvements that the city is proposing are complete. Condition eleven re- really just sort of reminds them about the, the canopy requirements. And then, condition twelve isn't in the staff report, and I was discussing this with, with Ben really just a little bit before the meeting. But it, it is sort of, I, I would say it's more of a reminder that, you know, on- once the city makes their, their improvements to, to Vine Street and Davis Lane, if, if still for some reason, let's say, you know, the county fire department still isn't a hundred percent sure that their, you know, fire trucks are gonna be able to get in and access that neighborhood, the ultimate responsibility for making sure that, you know, the, the, the streets are ne- or s- the, the necessary infrastructure is in place to serve the development is, is up to the applicant. And that's really what, what condition twelve there states. So, that is in the, the condition, the copy that Charlie has, and it's on the, the PowerPoint, but that, that's one that wasn't in the staff report, 'cause Ben and I hadn't had a chance to discuss it until just a couple of hours ago. But ultimately, I do recommend approval of the application with the, with the three variances and the twelve conditions.
Thank you, Mr. Summers. Anybody have any questions for Matt? Otherwise, we'll bring the applicant up. Thanks, Matt. Will the applicant come up to speak? Or somebody representing the applicant? State your name for the record.
Nicholas West.
And you are?
With Prism Engineering.
Okay. Cause I've got a Phil Grant Gambrell, so you're...
Yeah, unfortunately, Phil Gambrell was not able to make it tonight, so, you know, I'm not, he's the project leader on this one.
Okay.
So, I'm kinda filling in. Hopefully, I can answer any questions you all have.
Okay. You okay with all the conditions that Matt's presented as stated?
I believe they are all acceptable. The only question I might have was on condition ten regarding the phasing. I'm not entirely sure what the developer's intent is as to, with regards to the construction of the roadway improvements on Vine Street and then the access onto the proposed subdivision. I believe that they are wanting to put in that infrastructure concurrently with the improvements to Vine Street and not after the improvements to Vine Street.
Matt, you wanna maybe get up there and address that?
Yeah, I, I would, I would be fine with that. Really, this is just, condition ten really only deals with like the recording of the final plat, so, and, and some of you are, are new, once again, so I think it bears it, just I'm sort of going over. Once the, the preliminary subdivision plat is approved, the applicant will come with construction plans to the, to the planning staff, and once those are approved, you know, they can start grading, they can build roads, they can put the, the utilities in. And once all the, the infrastructure, the roads, the utilities, and things like that are in place, at that time, the applicant can record the final plat, start to sell lots or build on them. So, they could do the improvements on the lot at the same time the city, that the city is doing their improvements. Condition ten shouldn't hold them up.
Hopefully, that answers your question.
Yeah, I think that's, that's good.
Perfect. Any questions for the applicant or any questions of us besides that one? No? All right. Anybody in the audience here to speak against it or for it, please come up. Thank you, sir.
I'm William Stoll, and I'm the developer, and I wanted to clarify that that's two phases up there, but we had to give the entire, so the main street, the one going up to the cul-de-sac, would be phase one, and then phase two would be the, the lower line there. The property line on the very bottom is actually a creek, and we were trying to, you know, when we started this process about, what, fifteen months ago or sixteen months ago, we wanted to create a community, not a subdivision. And as you see, the, the open space in between the two, that's gonna be for the kids to play in, for people to enjoy. There's a buffer all the way around the property for walking or, or whatever. And if it ends up that multifamily won't work from phase two, we'll take a street right up through that multifamily and make it single-family. It's a, it's a great place to raise some kids. Sadieville's a great town.
Mr. Stoll, and, and I'm, I, I- Mr. Stoll, and I took this as one phase, correct, Matt? And then the future multifamily would be a future phase some other day? I mean, it doesn't...
That's correct. But, but it could, with the PUD zoning, you know, it has, multifamily has to have a completely different development plan.
Right. But I'm just wanting to clarify for everybody, the audience and the commission, this is fifty-four homes in one phase, and then that multifamily, which is M1 on this map, would...
It's actually, it's actually two phases there, sir. It's fifty-four, but that would be the entire single-family part of it.
First phase.
Well, the first, the top street is phase...
Right. That's not how it's being presented, correct?
Yeah, I can, I can clarify. So at the time that, you know, they come for the preliminary approval for the subdivision, they typically will just show the whole thing as much as they have planned at that time. The phasing usually comes sort of in the construction and the plating.
So for us, it's, it is one app, but you can do it phases. Okay. I just want to clarify it, make sure we didn't...
From my standpoint, the development of the streets, though, you know, do we have to develop all the, the phase two street as we're doing the first phase?
I don't think, no.
That was what, you know, because all is a pretty nasty word sometimes.
Right, right. So to answer your question, no. You're good. Thank you, Mr. Stoll. Yes, we got a couple.
Just a quick question. I know originally when this was, when this was started, it was supposed to have something to do with veteran housing. Is that still in the...
Yes, it's very much so.
Okay.
Very much so.
And what are you, where are you going with that? How are you developing that?
Well, we're, the, there are some pretty incredible programs for veterans right now. And the housing size, and, and we're on board to start out in the phase one with veteran preference on, on the loans. And we've got some, I know right now, you know, two and three percent loans are, are, you know, ridiculous, but the veterans' housing, when the loans go back up to seven or eight or nine percent, will be at two to three percent. And we're earmarked on, on some of those. We're also earmarked on single-family, uh, uh, single-parent families. We have some, some going there. And, and of course, of course, what used to be the farmer's home loan, which is now the Department of Agriculture and that, we fully qualify in that area also. We're looking at, well, with lumber prices where they've gone, we're looking at twelve to fourteen-hundred-foot, single-level, sixteen to seventeen-hundred-foot, two-story in, in that starter range, and it's a pretty nice house.
Any other questions for Mr. Stoll? If I can see that lapel correctly, thank you for your service.
Now, do it again.
All right. Anybody else in the audience like to speak, please, sir? For the record, state your name and address.
I live in Sadieville. Our land actually adjoins the, the upper sides. I have just a couple of questions for the applicant. Are these homes for sale or are they going to be rental homes?
Okay. We'll bring them back up and you can answer.
No, they're all for sale homes. Now, if you might want to decide to rent it, I can't control that.
Correct.
The other question is, I think what Mr. Smith asked, that was part of the initial presentation by the applicant or by Mr. Stoll, is that it would be for military. I think that may be part of the reason that it went over so well, because I'm opposed to it because we have farmland and farm animals, and our equipment is right behind that property line. And right now, we have some good neighbors, and they tell us when people are on our property. When you've got fifty-four houses over there, and you've got a little fence that they can cross, then that's, that's going to be hard to police for me. I'd go, I run kids off. I've actually, people have been on the land hunting that they're not supposed to, actually out of season and everything. We've had to run them off several times, but people tell me when that happens. It's going to be hard to police fifty-four families. I know that doesn't have anything to do with you guys, but it does with me.
Right.
Because we've been a resident out there for a long time, and now all of a sudden, our situation is going to be turned over. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else want, here to speak? Come on up.
I did not swear, Mr. Perkins. My name is Heather Lynn. I live at one seventy Roberts Lane.
Nice name again, Lynn.
Lynn, uh-huh.
Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to make to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think I, I own the property with my father, and my husband and I also live on the property at the one seventy Roberts Lane. I think for me, you know, obviously, it's a concern because we live on a farm and we don't want a subdivision behind us. You know, that's not anyone's issue, but my own, clearly. But I think the biggest thing for me would be the road and the safety leading into that area now. There is the railroad overpass there. If any of you have been back through there, you know what that's like going through there. You usually have to pass kind of one way. The roads back through there, I know they're planning on widening those. I don't know to what extent, you know, to, you know, how wide is a school bus going to be able to come through there? Right now, currently, those kids that live in the homes that are there now actually walk up to the main street to get on the school bus, you know, which to me would be a huge safety concern. And just in what Matt was saying, especially in, I guess, number ten in the conditions of approval, you know, who determines, at what point is it determined that those roads have met the requirements for safety and for the proper traffic flow for fifty-four additional homes, which could be, you know, a hundred-plus vehicles coming through at any time? I don't know if any of you are familiar or haven't even driven through that area, but currently, those houses are literally on the road, literally. You know, if they're going to widen that, I'm not sure how. Perhaps taking out a sidewalk, which is going to cause a safety concern again for children, you know, going to the bus stops or going where they need to go or going to the park or, you know, what have you. So I guess my main questions would be, at what point would construction begin in comparison to when the roads are widened and complete? You know, and if those don't meet any type of requirements, you know, have you destroyed all this land and like, oh, okay, well, we can't do this now because, you know, you couldn't get the roads wide enough to meet, you know, what are those requirements? How wide do those roads have to be? I think at this point, until those questions should be answered, I mean, I would postpone or delay any type of approval for this project just because there's too many unanswered questions. You know, I understand safety concerns and the house fire and, you know, the fire truck couldn't get to it, but that should be addressed before we build fifty homes back there, you know? Because if they couldn't...
I think maybe to answer your question, and I know you don't have a copy of the conditions, but the engineer came up and asked about condition number ten, and I'll read it. Planning commission staff shall not record any plats creating buildable lots for the project site until Vine Street and Davis Lane improvements the city has proposed are complete.
Sure.
So they're going to, you know...
So does that mean construction would go ahead and begin in spite of that?
Yeah, they won't even approve a buildable lot until those...
Those roads are complete. So they wouldn't start any grading or do anything?
Uh, they might do grading, but they will not approve buildable lots.
They can do grading, but they can't create lots so they can't sell lots since they can build on them.
Right. Right.
So really, a lot has to be done before those lots are approved even to build on.
Right. And I...
It looks like by the end of August, I believe that's right, they will start on Vine Street. And the plan is they will take out the sidewalks, and they'll actually give them a total of six feet, six feet wider. Now, on the west side of Vine Street, it's going to become one-way, which will make that a lot safer that way. There'll be no parking on that side of Vine Street, so they'll just be able to park on the one side.
Sure.
And they'll have to use their driveways. And that should give them plenty of room to...
Those homes don't have driveways.
Pardon?
Those homes don't have driveways.
The ones towards the property?
Correct. No, they don't. They, they park on the street. That's their parking.
Okay. Well, they'll have to, it'll be one side that'll defeat, they'll have...
You know, so I think there's just several concerns that really, if you're not in the area and you don't live on the, in the area and you don't travel those streets every day, you know, and again, even that railroad overpass, you can't, can't move that, you can't widen that, you know? So, you know, I would just really feel like there's some more questions that need to be answered before any type of approval should be made.
Thank you, Mrs. Lynn.
You're welcome.
Anybody else here to speak on behalf of this application, for or against? Any other questions by the commissioners of the applicant or our staff?
Mr. Chairman, I can clarify.
Please come on up, they need to speak.
Then, take your position, and we'll get you sworn.
Okay.
Do you swear affirm the statements you're about to give to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do, sir.
Thank you.
On the question on the west...
State your name.
My name is Robbie Wagner. I'm mayor in Sadieville.
Thank you, mayor.
On the question on the west side of Davis toward the railroad, that parking there is an old easement that the city has behind all of those properties. We will be opening those up, creating a driveway for those houses, and parking lots for them to pull two cars. So that will alleviate all the parking that's on the south side of Vine Street of those houses. And that's how we can come around, and we widen that curve out some, and then we create that there. And then we far, we plan to, I talked with our engineering yesterday and again today, and our project, a lot of it will depend upon the weather. We have the funding. We were, we received two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from emergency fund from the governor's office. And then the city has committed at least sixty thousand to, to finish this project. So, and with as much infrastructure as you all are familiar with, that the president is picking, our portion so far of ARPA money is a hundred and seven thousand dollars. So we have the monies that we can make this project happen, and that's our plans. So we are committed to this, to create safety situations. We had a problem with EMS buggy. We had a problem with fire trucks, and we realized that. And the governor's office, along with the transportation cabinet, and came down. Kelly Baker from the State Road Department of District Seven came down. They reviewed it all, and it went right to the governor's office for approval. So they said this has to be fixed. And Sadieville's committed to this. It should have been done fifty years ago when I was in there, mayor then, but even back prior to that, there was horse and buggies, and that's what it was designed for. Okay, so we're trying to play catch-up. And there's a lot of growing going on in Sadieville, and it's not easy, but I just call this a growing pain. We've got to fix it, and we are committed to that.
So all the houses now, if I can ask a question, that don't have off-street parking, all of those would now have off-street parking behind them?
All of those to the west of Davis will have, yes. Now, all those that on to the east of Davis...
Can you show us where that is here?
Yes. All of these houses here, starting here, okay, coming this way. All of these houses have off-street parking. They don't park, the problem we have with off-street parking with the ones who park there now are on the north side of Vine Street. And if you're, if you've been out there, it's just like this. And so those people, and their houses are somewhat, some of them aren't ten foot off the street.
Right.
And that was built so many years ago, so it's hard to relocate unless you go after urban renewal grant and tear those houses down and redo them. So, you know, and there is a lot right up here. There's three lots up here at this end, as you see, that are empty, that are owned by Mr. Clarence Pickett, and he has agreed to let us create some off-street parking. It's just a parking lot there for them. So, and we will do that, but I don't know how many people will...
What the furthest distance is between the...
Yeah.
Do you have any idea what the furthest distance would be for the furthest resident from that lot?
Uh, gosh. No, I don't. I would say...
You mean as far as walking distance?
Walking, if they're carrying stuff or...
I'd say probably a thousand feet. Yeah.
Is there any allowance for temporary, like even loading, loading kind of, I'm thinking if somebody's bringing in groceries or carrying a heavy load?
Of what?
Like temporary sort of loading, unloading kind of stuff where a thousand feet, depending on what you're carrying, right? Because the option would be, I guess, to pull in their grass?
They generally just pull in there and park. Now, the people on the south side of Vine Street here, I mean, yeah, on the south side, on the east side of Davis, they, if they have to, they park, they pull off. But most of those houses are, have off-street parking. Well, they all do on that side. It's a nature of the beast. We're just trying to fix it.
Any other questions for mayor?
Oh, I don't have a question for mayor, but I do have...
Come back up and, yeah, please.
I have a question for the mayor first.
I'm sure, come on up to the microphone, please.
He's my dad, I'll let him go.
Oh, you're, that's fine.
Rob and I have talked quite a bit about, about all of this, but my question is, where's this off-street parking going to be? I don't understand where you're talking about.
The, which off-street parking?
You just said you're going to...
The second portion that you're talking about, a thousand feet.
You said you got a thousand feet somewhere.
We have a thousand feet literally probably from this house up here to these three vacant lots. The gentleman who owns this has agreed to allow us to create a right-of-way, create some off-street...
Where's that at, Rob? I'm not understanding.
Oh, you know where you go down, you come up to the end of Vine Street?
That's the Cedar Shake House right there on the corner.
Yeah, and you go down on the Roberts Lane?
Yeah.
It would be right there.
You're talking about that empty area behind Wilson's painting?
Yeah, you see that big empty, those three empty lots right there?
They'd need a helicopter to get to their car, or that lot goes like that.
Well, I think, I think the parking will be created on, off of the street, not, not down over the hillside.
Well, then you don't have that much of a lot to put them on then, do you?
Well, you don't have but one, two, three, four, five houses there, so you're not going to add that many cars.
The other, where's the, are the one-way is?
The one-way.
We talked about that too.
This yellow, it comes out by the Davis Lane and comes out around here and goes This is, this is coming up your gateway up here. You see it? It comes down Davis Lane, goes down, and the one-way is clear.
I'll have to sell my camper. Weren't you, Mary, didn't you ask something about that?
I asked about how far the parking would be from those folks that, yeah.
Mrs. Lynn, did you have one more question?
The way things are purged, we, of course, it's personal, but I can't get out right there by, right here by Roberts Lane, because there's no way for my camper to make that turn. So I have to go all the way down, and that's the way I have to come back in. If it's one-way, once I go to a pit somewhere, I want to leave a camper there and just give it some...
No, I think you misunderstand. On this end of the lot, you'll be able to go that way.
But I told them I'd come here, I have to come here and go up that way to get there.
You can't make that turn?
Yep. Took out the stop sign, the heavy-duty stop sign, I torqued my camper up a little bit too, trying to make it the first time I brought it in. Opened up another can of worms there, yeah.
I think the, the best point that Mayor Wagner made is that there are some growing pains in Sadieville, and it makes the most sense to fix those growing pains before we add more residents to the area. Let's get what we have fixed and make it safe for the residents that are currently there, and then look at making some family homes for, you know, whether it be single parents or veterans or what have you. I mean, you need safety for those people. Those people need access to get to hospitals quickly or doctor's appointments quickly. That's going to be difficult from Sadieville from jump. I mean, because you're twenty minutes from Georgetown, you know? So that's almost unreasonable in and of itself if that's the demographic that you're looking for in that subdivision. You know, am I opposed to the subdivision? Not necessarily, but I really think that there's lots of things that need to be fixed, answered, taken care of before anything should have any kind of approval tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I think you kind of answered that. I mean, it says in number ten, until that has been completed, that they can't start it, so.
So we could approve it.
Correct.
And because of ten, it's going to hold its feet for the five...
Hold their feet to get it.
Right.
Those things change before then.
I had one question from either, probably from Matt.
I had one question from either, probably from Matt. Do we have anything in our regulations as far as a line fence or anything that joins agricultural property? I guess if they have a farm that backs up to this, I know with subdivisions in the county, we have some.
Yeah, I was, I actually just, just looked at that when we, the comment from the neighbor. We, we don't, so when the lots are developed as single-family, there's, there's not a requirement for there to be a landscaping buffer between them. If the applicant had been developing, you know, townhomes or apartments, then we, we would require a buffer between that residential use and the agricultural zone. So there's nothing in, in the landscaping ordinance that would, that would require a buffer.
I was just thinking about a fence, just, I mean, an improved fence. I mean, a lot of times we require the, like a diamond wire or horse fence for-
Yeah, I mean, there, there are cases, there are, there have been cases before the planning commission where, where we have added that condition. You know, I'm thinking about, you know, the, the buffer between some of the single-family residences at, you know, Rocky Creek and, and the Bell Farm and things like that. We have made that requirement before, I'm just saying that there's not one in the landscaping ordinance where I would have, you know, told them that this is a requirement that is set forth in ordinance.
I thought it might be smart on our part just to put the expectation in there for the, for the developer that, that a fence might need to be improved along, along a farm, especially if they have livestock or-
I mean, I, I wouldn't be opposed to a condition like that being added.
Come on up, Mrs. Lynn.
That would be certainly appreciated, Mr. Smith, I thank you for suggesting that.
Do you not have any kind of fence on up there at all?
There is fencing there currently, but there's been many times I've gone over into that property chasing a horse, because they've gotten through.
So what kind of fence do you currently have?
It's, it's just a, a wire fence, wire fencing, yeah.
So there is a fence on the property, on the whole property line?
Yes, absolutely, yes, sir, yes, sir, because that is one of our main horse fields, so yes, sir, it is fenced.
It's a good time to build-
A nicer one.
Well, I usually to build new fence when, with, with one person than it is with four people.
All right, any other questions, comments, entertain a motion? Need to move forward? I got a motion by Dan Smith to-
To go ahead and, to move forward and approve, what's the number? PSP 202117.
So I've got a motion by Dan Smith.
Twelve conditions of approval.
I've got a, yep, I got a second by Mr. Stone. And I guess we could just do an all in favor, all in favor say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion passes.
Did we want to put anything as far as condition on the fence?
You'll have to, because I really can't, correct, Charlie?
Yeah, I'm, I'm-
I mean, it's not an ordinance.
Have to have been some sort of compromise, some sort of agreement for something or an inducement by the applicant. No, if we don't have it in the regs, we can't require it.
It's not in the regs, we can't, thank you though for bringing that up.
That, that's obviously something we need to consider putting in the regs, I frankly thought it was in there.
Yeah, it's in, it was kind of a loophole, I guess, when it's in the city.
Thank you, Mr. Perkins, thank you, Mr. Smith. You can come up to Charlie and sign.
Oh, yes.
Next on the agenda is, whoops, I threw my- It's Bluegrass Baptist Church, it's what I knew right there, let me read that real quick. Bluegrass Baptist Church, PDP 2021-22, Preliminary Development Plan for Expansion of the Existing Church and Parking Areas.
All right, thank you. The, the project site in this application is located at 210 New Coleman Lane. The site is zoned A1, it's our agricultural zone, and the surrounding properties are zoned, are mostly zoned A1, there is one B2 zone property that adjoins it. The project site is a little under three and a half acres in size, and all access to the lot comes from New Coleman Lane. There's two variances that are being requested with this application, and, and we'll, we'll talk about those here in just a second. So, just as background, the final development plan for the existing, you know, building and parking area was, was approved in 2017. Earlier this year, the applicant came to the Scott County Board of Adjustment to request, I guess, a revision on their conditional use permit to allow for an expansion, and that was approved in, in May of this year. I guess, just as a side note, churches are, are conditional uses in, in all zoning districts, so that's, that's why they went to the Board of Adjustment, is, was to amend that conditional use permit. So the proposed development, or the project site rather, is a double frontage lot. Like I said, all access would, would come from New Coleman Lane, there's not really any feasible access from, from Lexington Road. Currently, the project site has, has one entrance and two are proposed. If I go to the- This, this shows the, the zoning of the property. So in this image, north is, I guess to the top of the screen, you see US 25, Lexington Road there on the right-hand side of the property. New Coleman Lane sort of runs along the north side of the property, and it, this, this site is right there at the corner, bordered to the west by, by another church and to the south by the, the John Deere facility. So when we look at the, the project site and what the applicant is proposing, so they, they, you know, they're coming before us for the preliminary develop, preliminary development plan approval of three future phases to their site. So Phase One, as they're proposing it, would, would involve the construction of a new entrance. So if you remember from the aerial image we saw a couple of slides ago, it would, it would basically be in that area where they had the construction entrance from when they built the facility. So they would do, they would do a new full entrance, a second full entrance, as well as adding about 30 parking spaces. Phase Two of the project would, would be the expansion on the existing building of about 7,000 square feet. And then the third phase of the project would be to construct about 64 parking spaces. And, and that fa, third phase is, is contingent upon the project site being approved to, to connect to public sewer, since that entire parking area is sort of over what is now the, the septic field. There, as I mentioned, there are two variances that the applicant is requesting. The first would be to allow the building height, the maximum building height to be increased to 34 feet from 30 feet, which would allow them to meet the height of the exist, match the height of the existing church out there. So I, I recommend approval of that variance, it's a fairly small variance, and there's some mature tree lines around the edge of the property which would, should help to, to soften the view from the other church and, and the commercial property to the south. I'm also agreeable to their, to their second variance. The second variance would be to reduce the side and rear yard setbacks for, for just sort of some corners of the proposed building expansion in Phase Two. It would reduce those setbacks from 50 feet to 38 feet, so, kind of similar to with, with the other variance. You know, there are some mature tree lines in that area which should help soften the view. They're also proposing some, some additional landscaping and, you know, around the project site as part of the parking and things like that, which should help to minimize some of those off-site impacts that might occur. So I didn't find that either of the requested variances would, would have an adverse impact on the public health, safety, or welfare. The plan is drawn, does seem to comply with all of our landscaping requirements and, and other development requirements, so I am recommending approval of the application with the two variances and, and the eight conditions that are listed in the staff report. Pretty much all of those are, are standard that we would include with any development plan, and Condition Eight just sort of formalizes that, you know, that third phase isn't really possible until the applicant is able to connect to public sewer.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Summers?
Yeah, on number eight, I'm assuming, is there sewer lines out there now?
Public sewer?
Yes.
Uh, no, there is not public sewer there now.
They're coming.
Yeah, I think, I think as part of the, the South Sewer Project, there's a, there's a possibility that they could in the future connect to that, that line.
Any other questions for Mr. Summers? All right, we'd like, thanks, Matt.
Thank you.
Like to bring up the applicant?
I'm Kyle, I'm the pastor, Kyle Fannin at Bluegrass Baptist Church. We need more parking, we need a bigger building.
Thanks, Pastor, for making it quick. Any, anybody else here in favor of or against who'd like to speak, or any questions for Pastor Fannin? Good problem to have, growing pains. All right, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve, PDP 2020-22, with the two variances and the eight conditions.
So we have a motion made by Mr. Garrett.
I'll second.
A second by Mrs. Singer, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. Pastor, if you'd like to step up there to sign away with Charlie, please do so. Looks like we've got one more on the agenda. Charlie, I'm trying. PDP 2021-24, Project Whittaker, Preliminary Development Plan to Construct a 317,520-square-foot Warehouse Distribution Center Located on Carley Court, Georgetown Industrial Park.
All right, this is a request for Preliminary Development Plan Approval in, in existing industrial park in southeast Georgetown. So it's, it's an older industrial park. This should build out the remaining area in the park, so it's inside the bypass, I think you all know where it is, off Lemons Mill in town. So the park now has about 10 to 11 users, I believe. It's been originally approved in 99, so it's been in operation for a long time. The area that we're talking about today, the site area, is just the remainder of the park west of, or south actually of Carley Drive, all the way to the railroad and to the, to the bypass to the east. The park, as originally approved, included a connection to the future bypass. So at the time of approval, the bypass wasn't yet constructed. I think they had the general alignment, and they planned for a connection, a main entrance from Lemons Mill, but a future connection to the bypass. And if you could see the bypass as constructed, it did have, it's a limited access road, so it has spacing, entrance spacing every 1,200 feet, I believe generally. Maybe 1,600 feet with some, some closer intersections ma, near the major roads. But you can see two points of potential access to the park. One at the main median cut, which aligns with where the main building is proposed in this development plan. There's also a, a right-in, right-out at the Amerson Farms project across the street, so there is a potential for a connection at that point as well. But I think if they're, they're going to build a connection there, it would have to be right-in, right-out as well. I'm not, I don't recall the spacing of the median cuts, but I think it's 1,600 feet, not 1,200. There is a city ordinance that limits access along the bypass at standard intervals, so that's, that's the way it was constructed with those median cuts at, at the areas that were proposed for full entrances. So I put in this, this slide just the existing businesses that are there. The main, the main businesses or industries in the park now, there's four, like, major employers. Liggett and Platt, Vutek, which, and International Crankshaft both expanded in the last, since I've been here, so the last 10 years, I think it's Vutek more recently. So Liggett and Platt, International Crankshaft, and Vutek are the major employers with over 300 employees, based on the data I had. And then Minova or For, Forrock, I think they just changed their name, has almost 100 employees. So combined, there's probably 1,000 to 1,200 employees currently in the park in four major employers, and there's, there's other businesses there as well with, you know, less than 20 employees, I'd say, each. But as, as the original park was planned, there was a, a planned connection to the bypass just to serve not only the businesses that were initially locating in the park, but the future expansion in this area that we're looking at now. They're going to take up the remainder of it, so this will build out the park so you don't really have to plan too much for additional business other than the expansion of existing businesses there. Vutek's probably built out, I think Liggett and Platt may have some ability to expand. International Crankshaft expanded recently, I don't think they have much land, and they purchased some, a farm to the north of the park, or I guess the west of the park, for a future expansion, but that will have a separate entrance on, onto Lemons Mill. So generally, we have to look at the traffic generation of this facility, since it'll build out the park, but you also have to consider its impact on the existing businesses there as well, and that's what I tried to do in my staff report. As far as the, the layout of the site, it is a, is big building, 350 by 900 approximately, but it's under our maximum building area coverage in I-1, so we allow up to 50% building coverage in the industrial, light industrial district. So it's well under that, it's under the height limitations. They've provided all the parking, more parking than's required in I-1. So generally, all the building and development meets our requirements, so we don't have any, there's no variances requested, we don't have any issues with the building itself other than the fact that the, the location of it and the size of it cuts off any potential connection to the bypass in that area that was previously planned. So that's, it's really our main, I guess, concern with the site plan. It doesn't reflect whether it meets our, our current regulations, but it's just its impact on the park in general. We did require a traffic study, just because of the size of the development, and the, they've indicated there will be up to 300 employees. The traffic study showed, generally, the findings were that the, that this development will have negligible impact on the surrounding road network. They looked at the Carley Drive intersection, they looked at the bypass intersection, and they looked at the internal public intersection in the, in the park. What it's, the main findings, and I, I think their traffic engineer is here to speak to the, to the traffic study, so I won't go into too detail, too much detail, but its main findings are that Lemons Mill, east and westbound at the bypass, is functioning at below optimum level of service. So it's a level of service D, westbound, or eastbound, heading towards the, the bypass in the AM and E in the PM, and same for the westbound. So essentially, what's that saying, is that there's delays at the intersection as, as you people are leaving the park and, and town headed towards the, towards the bypass, they're waiting at the intersection, and they're stacking up, and there's, there's enough delays to deteriorate the level of service there. But what the traffic study also showed is that the no-build and the build conditions, there were no significant differences. So the no-build showed the same level of service, and the build actually showed a little bit better level of service. And the only, well, the explanation is that the, the, the light will cycle differently with more traffic, and will allow for a longer green time, is my understanding why, the reason it got better. But essentially, there's no changes from the, the no-build to the build. The rest of the, the review, they, they meet all our landscaping requirements, so we have internal employee parking lot, automobile parking lot, we have interior landscape requirements, they meet all that. The loading and unloading areas are exempt from our interior landscaping requirements, so they didn't need to meet that landscaping requirements. We do require perimeter landscaping along public, facing any public roads, so along the bypass and any internal public roads. They're showing they can meet all our landscaping requirements. They did show no protection of canopy on-site, so they did calculate landscaping, meeting our canopy requiring, based on, requirement based on saving no existing landscaping. We would like to see if they could maintain- We would like to see if they could maintain the buffer along the bypass. A lot of that is in, kind of along the right-of-way fence, in-state right-of-way, and some maybe on their property. So if they can maintain that to protect, kind of to screen from the bypass, that can count towards our landscaping requirements, so we'd like them to do that. But other than that, the development plan itself is meeting all our requirements in the A-1 and all our subdivision development and regulation requirements. However, they still will need to meet Georgetown Municipal Water and Sewers. They still will have to apply for availability and get that, and get their sewer plans approved prior to final development plan approval. They also have to, they did go to the Royal Springs Wellhead Committee, because this is in the Royal Springs Aquifer. They did recommend approval with conditions, and their conditions will be incorporated as conditions. And I did put them as conditions of the planning commission, so they will have to meet those as well. And then any fire safety requirements of Georgetown Fire, they will have to meet that on the final development plan as well. So to summarize, the main issue really with this site development is its lack of connection to the bypass. And from a staff perspective, I think this is a good development, it's something that would benefit the city, but its impact, not only internally in the park and on Lemons Mill and future development along Lemons Mill, necessitates that they try to get a connection to the bypass, I think, if possible. I mean, there were two planned connections. They've stated that, you know, the grades, the grade of the building and the requirements for the parking lots and the loading and unloading areas make it impossible to make that connection. But, I mean, I guess we'd like to see their explanation as to why, how they've explored the option and what their reasoning is. I think it makes sense to go to whatever extent they can to make that connection, if possible, just to serve. With three hundred additional employees, it's a twenty-five percent roughly increase in the number of employees in the park. If there's already deficiencies on Lemons Mill, I think this will just make it kind of more difficult. Whether or not, if that signal timing changes, it's going to back up the bypass traffic. I mean, it's got to go, that impact's got to go somewhere. It might not, if it's not in Lemons Mill, it'll impact the bypass traffic. So I just think when you, just like Cherry Blossom, you plan these connections, I think you need to go to whatever extent you can to make the connections, just to allow better connectivity. I mean, this is the main entrance also for the Amerson project across the street. There's a light planned, but it doesn't warrant a light at this point. I think this would help a light warrant. I think there might be state traffic people here. They might be able to speak to it, but I think if they can make that connection, they need to, they need to try to make the connection to the bypass.
Any questions for Joe?
When was the traffic study done?
It was done last month. I think the date, June fourteenth, was when the counts were done, I believe, or late May. Late May. I think we got the report on the fourteenth.
I saw it in here somewhere.
Any questions, other questions for Joe?
Joe, my understanding, and you talk about Leggett and Platt, my understanding is maybe, while it's not been publicly announced, it's not necessarily also not confidential, that Leggett and Platt has already been approved for some expansion?
I don't, they haven't been approved for any building expansion. I think employee expansion might be in the works, so.
Well, which is the impact we're talking about here, right? Do you know what the number is?
I do not, no.
Any other questions? All right, let's hear from the app, oh, Mrs. Singer, go ahead.
You mentioned the two entrances to the, or exits, entrances to the bypass plan connections. That was based off the fully built-out industrial park plan and assumptions, or?
That was based on a preliminary layout of the park. So it was based on, you know, they planned the park, essentially, have a preliminary road layout, preliminary lot layout, and then as sections sell off, they may combine or split up the lots differently than what was originally proposed. So it was just to develop the whole park, have another entrance there, and, you know, split off lots along that street, I think was the intent.
Any other questions? You'd like to bring the applicant up. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you all, and I'm hoping that my PowerPoints can be able to come up here in just one second. For the record, Nick Nicholson here on behalf of Setzer Properties. With Setzer Properties, Brett Setzer, Robbie Macatee, and Josh Markham. Jason Banks and Kyle Hall are also here with Banks Engineering, and Diane Zimmerman with Zimmerman Traffic Engineering. And so combined, I certainly hope that we all can answer any questions. I'm just hoping this guy's going to be able to pop up. It'll make it a lot easier to tell you about this development if we're able to take a look at it.
Where's the box, Joe? Do we know to?
I know, they're all three, yeah.
Is that what it is? There it is.
There we go.
That's what I was wondering, which way to point that. Oh, there you go.
Now we're starting to move. Okay, here is kind of a colored rendering of this site. It is a forty-eight acre site. We're talking about a three hundred thousand square foot, basically industrial shipping and distribution facility. It will finish out the industrial park, as Mr. Kane said. The way that this is kind of working, we are bringing people in. I guess this is not going to hit on there. It's not hitting the screen.
I think it is a little delay, what seems like, right?
So it's basically the eighteen-wheelers are going to be coming on off Carley Drive and coming into this facility in this location where they're kind of having the parking where the bays are. This is where it kind of unloads. The package handlers will be coming in off Caden Lane and coming into this employee section right here, where they come into the facility, basically help, basically sort the packages that came off of the eighteen-wheelers. And then also the van drivers that will be kind of the distribution points also park in the employee parking lot. They come in there, they get in the vans, they load their vans, and then they head out to their distribution points. Once their trucks are basically empty, they come back to the facility. They will then get in their cars and head on. And so I know one of the kind of questions that was brought up was why the need for the six hundred and five parking spaces. Joe is right. At full build-out, we are looking at around three hundred to three hundred and fifty employees here. And we also know that with this type of industry, we are dealing with seasonal changes. We do know that Christmas comes but once a year, but that is a reality for that type of kind of season that we have to increase that kind of seasonal employee count. And so the six oh five parking spaces is something that has been very much studied. This is a kind of, you know, facility that is located nationwide. And so they know fairly accurately what the kind of different parking requirements are for the facility, although we know full well that a majority, an overwhelming majority of this time, this parking lot's never going to be full. It just needs to be there for any type of overlap and kind of the seasonal rub. I said that we're talking about three hundred to three hundred and fifty jobs here. I got brought on just about a week ago on this project, and so I've yet to be able to do a full kind of economic impact study for what this will mean for the city of Georgetown. I do know that construction costs are already north of three hundred, or, excuse me, thirty million dollars. We can't get into payroll and fortunately, property tax increase, because I honestly just have not had time. I did notice that right now, per the, basically, the yearly taxes, we're at twenty-seven thousand dollars on this property right now because of the ag exemption. Even though it is zoned industrial, has been zoned industrial since at least, I think, nineteen eighty-eight, if not before, we are talking about a major economic impact. I've stood in this room many a times, and I've been told Georgetown is very tired of me just bringing in households, bringing in apartments, because they're tired of being a bedroom community, standing before you all, bringing in jobs and bringing in a major commercial investment into this community. Now, I wanted to point this out, and I think Joe did an excellent job, like, talking about it and pointed it out throughout his entire presentation. We are meeting every single requirement in the zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, development codes, every single thing. This is an industrial user in an industrial zone. It's been zoned for a long time, and it has set vacant for a long time. There are complications with this site. There are a lot of slope issues with this site, and I'm sure that that probably adds to the reason why it has set vacant for so long. If this road was simple to build, someone would have built it, and it would have been developed along with this rest of the park. But the reality is, this is not an easy road to build whatsoever. This system that we are basically posing, it is a secured facility. We talked about it at the work session, that we are having a security fence, basically kind of around the entire facility, and there are security gates at these entrances. This is what one of those security gates kind of looks like, and you can even see the little fences right here. I swear. It just stops on the screen. But this is where kind of the difference of the traffic is handled, where certain, basically, certain types of vehicles, certain type of drivers are allowed access through different types of gates. And so as you are kind of coming in this basically site, you'll see here is one of these security gates, right here. Whenever you put those security gates in, you have to put in a cul-de-sac, which is what we have done here on Carley Drive with this kind of proposed improvement. You have to do that in order for any of the, basically, public that has kind of wandered in on the wrong kind of entrance point, or any kind of, you know, employee that has come into the wrong entrance point. There must be a safe and easy way for the public to basically turn around so you don't get caught at these gates and are trying to back up and do any kind of odd turn movements. The reality is, where we're putting the security gates, if we try to put an entrance right here, we'd be having to put a cul-de-sac right at the end of, basically, where that access point is off the state. I would be very surprised if the state would be allowing an access point with a security gate and a cul-de-sac right off of kind of McClellan Circle, even if the slope did work. But we spent a whole lot of time kind of explaining why the slope does not work at the workshop. I thought Jason did an excellent job kind of explaining how the, basically, the floor area kind of elevation is established. Once you are coming into this facility, the area where these eighteen-wheelers are coming, they have to be at a zero-slope area. So once you come in off kind of Carley Drive right there, you are kind of establishing what the kind of baseline floor elevation for this site needs to be. And unfortunately, basically, right there, I don't know if you can really tell, right there at Carley, you're at eight ninety-four. And so that kind of basically established that this facility needs to be at eight ninety-four, eight ninety-seven, is where we kind of ended up in order to make sure that we are able to kind of stay and maintain the right slope route this site for this distribution facility. The problem is, this site is very topographically challenged. When you're coming off Caden Lane, you're at nine hundred and twenty-five feet. At McClellan Circle, you're at nine hundred and six. Back in here on all of these areas, you dip down to about eight eighty, eight eighty-two. There are several areas that we have basically had to add upwards of fifteen feet of fill in order to make the eight ninety-seven work. The way this kind of slide works, and this is kind of coming out of what our conversation was at the work session, I wanted you all to really get a feel for the type of work we are going to be doing in this area. This is the access point right now, basically cross-section, looking into the property and kind of what we are proposing. Right up here is part of the facility itself. So here is the area, basically, the dotted line is the existing ground coming from McClellan down to this point. And this is not even that far away from basically your high point of nine twenty. It gets much more challenging back in here. This is your, basically, fill area in order to get it up to the eight ninety-seven. This is what we're having to do in order to make sure that we're meeting all the stormwater requirements, all of the Royal Springs Aquifer requirements, in order to make sure that basically all the stormwater is being handled. In order to get back up there to McClellan Circle, you're talking about grades of fifteen to twenty-five percent in order to get this road basically coming off McClellan. There is simply no way to physically make that work. We've decided, we looked at other locations throughout the site, even if, which I don't know if they would, if the state would have let us slide into that sixteen-hundred separation, moving further up or further down the site. I think as several people pointed out, that they knew that those slopes in those situations were even worse. If you're basically at the top of, I believe it's also part of the Amerson development that's basically past the apartments, when you're at that top of the hill, you can see right across and see where the industrial property is. You then go down a crest fairly steep, and you're looking up at at least twenty to thirty feet of basically rock right in front of you where this industrial area is. So an access point on this area simply just cannot work in this location. And I think it's a major reason why it has remained vacant kind of throughout this area. We have tried several different ways. We have tried flipping this building. We have tried going lengthwise. We have tried to elongate the building. We've tried to go sideways or kind of diagonal. And quite frankly, it just does not work with regards to the grading on the site. A lot of it is because of where the set levels are on McClellan and the set levels are on Carley. But this is the only, basically, there just, there was not an easy solution where any of it could be, where we could get that access point on there. The good news is, like I said earlier, not just that do we meet all of the, basically, the requirements, and there we do with flying colors. We did a traffic study, and we made sure that it, basically, is as clear as day that we are not causing any type of negative impact in the traffic. I know you all see these a lot, but it's always helpful to get a kind of refresher. You have your AMP, PM peaks periods. You have your three kind of major intersections that were studied and bowled in the different directions, and you have the existing conditions, the no-build situation, and then a full-build situation. You are seeing negligible impact on basically the Lemons Mill at Carley Drive intersection. I mean, point four seconds of a difference, one second, basically, on Carley. You are looking at point three seconds in the PM peak and one point five seconds, basically, again, on Carley. The McClellan Circle in Lemons Mill is the road that everybody I know wants to talk about. Yes, it is right now at conditions D and E. That is existing today. What is fascinating about this situation is the road that is the problem is Lemons Mill, and we are making Lemons Mill better. You are having a decrease in seven seconds from existing conditions to a full build on Lemons Mill when you're headed eastbound. You are getting basically a two-second break when you're headed westbound. And while I don't want to contradict Mr. Kane, you aren't seeing the exact change in McClellan Circle. You are seeing only a gain of around two and a half seconds. You're only seeing a gain of point eight seconds. It is not an equal situation where if you are just basically, you know, taking, reducing the wait time on one side, you're adding to it on the other side. That's not exactly how the kind of traffic engineering science works here. The key thing is, is we are taking an existence condition that is not ideal. We are making it better, and we are not causing a negative impact on any of the other situations, any of the other intersections whatsoever. The reason why we're able to do that is because of the shift times. We're dealing with a very unique user when it comes to industrial park. In order for us to be efficient, we want to be on the road when other people are not on the road. In order to have our kind of deliveries be handled in the most efficient way, we don't want to be on the roads during AMP, PM peak periods. We do not want to be on the roads when you're having major factories let out their entire shifts. And so we've looked at the areas, and we've tried to basically time this in order to make sure that this can be done as efficiently as possible, so this traffic is not in impact. It is truly an ideal user to finish out an industrial park where you already have heavy manufacturing that has existing shifts, because we can work around those. With Adient, I got kind of conflicting information, and I'm guessing it's because of the COVID situation. It looks like they dropped a shift but expanded at some point. I saw a sign out there today that they're advertising for third shift. And so I don't know if they've gone back to the original kind of model or not, but I wanted to make sure you all had both of those times. Vutek basically matched the Adient times. You'll see. You'll see, our distribution system is basically, we're heavy, we're people coming in at 2:00 a.m. to basically help unload the tractor-trailers that have come in basically throughout the night. They leave at 9:00, 9:00 a.m. after the PMP, or the AM peak period. We come in the next shift at 2:00 to 9:00. This is not a 24-hour operation as far as like when you have a majority of your workers there. We miss lunch. We miss the PMP period. We are trying to make sure that when traffic is coming, it's at an ideal time based on all of the users and based on this area. We also encourage our van drivers to have the flexibility to be able to know their area, because most of these guys are locals, where they're able to come in when they know that it's a low-traffic time, they know when they can deliver their packages the best, and they can come back in and drop their car off. There isn't a set time where van drivers need to be there at 8:00 a.m. or anything like that. It is trying to make sure that they are on the roads at the most efficient times in order to make sure that they are efficiently delivering these packages. Now, there were two kind of intersections that I believe the staff kind of were, were pointed out that they had some initial concern with. The beautiful part about Lemons Mill and on the kind of, basically, Carley Lane and even the Adient facility, is very clear that whoever built these and whoever striked these did so with intention, that this is an industrial area, this is industrial traffic, and they need to be able to handle a lot of traffic. 500-lane, or 500-foot left-turn lane with stacking. That is a fantastic tool to have at an intersection. When we studied this, in the AM peak period, only 143 feet of backup of usage was basically used in this 500 feet, under half. In the PMP period, when a lot of people were basically coming out of Georgetown or coming out of one of these facilities, you're only at 235 feet of stackage. Once again, you're under half of the available area. And once again, our traffic is not hitting during the AM and PMP hours, so we're not adding to any stackage issues. The other one was basically taking a left turn out of the Adient facility. I found this interesting because when you are basically looking at this, you have 275 feet of stackage when you're going to the Carley, taking a left-hand turn. What's interesting about that is, the traffic studies showed that in the AM peak periods, only about 50 cars were coming from, basically, eastbound, coming from Georgetown, headed down this road. So, you're talking about under a car a minute per hour. That doesn't lead to much stackage. That leads to a fairly free-flowing left-hand turn onto Carley, because there's not any cars coming that's going to interrupt. And that's why we saw that, on average, there's under a car basically stacked up, trying to take a left-hand turn at the AM peak period. The PMP period was about 100 cars in that hour. So, it's more, but you're still 2 cars a minute, is basically what you're looking at. And so, there's very little stackage that will occur there, but once again, even if there is, you've got 275 feet, and I separated this on purpose because the striking stops right on the Adient, basically, the exit point. Everybody wanted to make sure that they knew that that was a access drive, that there needed to be a point where you stopped. You stop at the, basically, the double, double-yellow line, and then once, if there is stackage up there, you can basically continue on. It allows, honestly, I think, for common sense, that folks are gonna follow the rules of the road, and so, especially the guys that are working here, they're gonna be, if there is stackage whatsoever, they're going to stop at where that curb, or the, the line cut is. They're gonna know exactly who's coming, they'll see left-hand turn movements, and so I do believe that even if there was stackage, this road has truly been designed with that exact issue in mind. But again, I just do not really see that much stackage. The traffic report does not back it up, and it just, you know, it's, it's a free-left, basically, flow-in turn right there. I'm trying to... I mean, at this point, I believe I've probably talked enough to you all. In conclusion, what I did want to just basically say is that we have intentionally planned this exact user for this exact type situation, where we're able to come into an industrial park that has shovel-ready land, that has been vacant, that has additional users all around it, and we're able to be integrated into the system in such a way that we are not causing this traffic impact that folks are worried about. With the slope on the area, there's simply no physical way to make that connection. And I don't find it unusual whatsoever that that connection has not already been made, even if it was planned back in the 80s. This facility has been built out, this will be the final piece, there aren't really any unknowns. Yes, facilities can be expanding, but you are dealing with limited, essentially, plot of land at this point. So, we do think that this is basically the, the last piece of the puzzle, and it's a puzzle that has been planned to basically have this exact user here, based on the access that's being able to be provided on Carley and on Caden Lane. I'm happy to answer any questions, the full team is happy to answer any questions. The only thing we would ask is that since we are in complete compliance with every single zoning code, every single rule that you all have, that you approve this pretty much by right development without the one condition that staff has, the first condition. So, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. Nicholson, right, Nicholson, correct?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Singer. You've got a lot of questions tonight.
All right. You mentioned the peak times. Can you tell me again the times that you have 9 to 2, or 2 to 9, you said, right?
So, a majority of workers that are coming in are basically coming in from 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and then 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And so, we miss essentially an overwhelming majority of time where people are on the roads. Even for users that are basically, you know, active from, you know, basically 8 to noon, you know, 1, 2, 5, we kind of, kind of completely miss that period. So, any kind of folks that are coming in, you know, from 3:00 to 6:00, all of our traffic's basically in-house at that point.
So, the, if I can ask, maybe, I, this is your all's counts, right?
Yes.
Okay. Can you put the shift times up there again?
I, yes.
So, their times are, 3 o'clock, 3 to, 3 to 6 probably total, right? Counting overtime. It looks like you all have a total of 519 during those peak hours, at least in terms of departing, and I guess vans arriving?
I would need to actually, I don't have those in front of me, unfortunately.
Okay. I could tell you this. It's from, I just calculated, oh, from 3:00 to 6:00, looks like those totals would equal 519, so that would be during the peak hours, right? And maybe that's drivers coming back from being out on delivery?
Yeah, between 3 and 6 ever come up?
Yeah, between 3 and 6, if you added, and then there's another 186 at 2.
Yes, I mean, so what we are talking about here is a staggering of, there are some departing, where you were talking about, in an hour, 38 cars in an hour leaving this facility. In another hour, you're talking about 64 cars leaving that facility.
Right.
You're talking under a car a minute, basically, leaving. These are not any type of kind of, you know, set-shift workers where someone's being released and everybody's headed out at the same time. These are just typical kind of movements that are occurring, where it is employees leaving that, that aren't part of the package handling, some are van drivers coming and going, but yes, those are just kind of the typical ones.
So, the, it's the packaging people you're talking about, the 9 to 2, or the 2 to 9?
Yes, so the majority of the workers that are in-house in this facility are in the hours from the 2 to the 9, in both AM and PM.
Okay.
And so, you are having drivers basically come in variable times, but very much in a limited way. There is no waves, and it is kind of a casual rollout.
Do you have any way of anticipating the number of tractor-trailers that would come and go on average day, or?
So, on the tractor-trailers, it is somewhere around 200 at full build-out. Full build-out is not expected for another 10 to 15 years, but you are looking at somewhere around 200, and overwhelming majority of those happen basically after 8:00 p.m. and well before kind of 6:00 a.m.
6:00 a.m. overnight.
Yes. And I think it is, looking at it, it is, under 20 are actually there in daylight hours.
Could the person that did the traffic study?
He's right here.
Come up.
This is Diane Zimmerman, for the record.
I was not sworn in.
You swear a firm statement you're about to make to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mrs. Zimmerman, is there any correlation between Mr. Nicholson mentioned stacking lengths and traffic cycling? So, you only have, you have 250 cars in a space for 500, but how long is that?
So, that was 500, 250 feet?
500 feet.
Not cars.
500 feet.
Yeah. But when the light turns green, you can assume that a vehicle is going to clear the intersection every 3 seconds?
Every 3 seconds, all right. And what about, we, we talked about, Joe mentioned and Mr. Nicholson both mentioned the traffic signal on McClellan Circle and Lemons Mill. If it increases a bunch, who decides that cycle changes? Does the state have to come in?
Well, the state would make that decision, but the analysis does not assume any change to the signal timing. It is already programmed to allow this much traffic to go out. And what, what the analysis is showing is by adding additional vehicles, that will allow additional green time over the hour, because there's more cars present to use the green time that was available. When, once the light turns green and that approach clears, then it goes, all the green time, let's say it was set for 35 seconds, and they only use 20, that 15 seconds goes back to McClellan Circle. So, what the analysis is saying, because there's more cars, for instance, I'm not reading numbers here, it would be, instead of it taking 20 seconds, maybe it takes 25, and so that reduces the delay for both people over the average of an hour.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes. Steve?
Now, I've got one question on the, I mean, it seems to me that the one person is gonna be affected negatively on this is probably the intersection that's across from that proposed entrance. Is there a way that the state would give that any preference, because it is only a, instead of being a...
So, the Amerson Development?
Yes, the Amerson and the school, the elementary school, I mean...
So, I, I certainly can't speak for the state, but I know that a majority of their decisions are, are based on traffic counts, and when it basically hits their threshold, that, that will then be basically looked at whether it's time to put in a full signal. I think Mr. Kane indicated that they have already kind of slated this intersection eventually for an, for a signal, but I don't believe that that has certainly been approved or in the five-year plan or anything like that. But the more that that Amerson Development actually builds out, that is what will really push the state to put the, the signal on there.
Grab your pen, I've got a bunch of questions. So, you ready?
Sure.
So, you use the term shovel-ready. I've studied this map, I've walked out to the property, the east side's 906, the far west side is 905, 1-foot difference between the far east end of the property, west and north is 920, south is 892. So, really, the high point is the north part, which is the driveway that comes off of Caden Lane.
Correct, into the employee lot.
And you use that on Monday as an excuse why you couldn't connect to the bypasses because of this huge slope. And if you follow it all the way from east to west, there's a foot here, foot there, it's, and I stood on the bypass and looked and went, this is beautiful property, and we welcome it to the community. I mean, I think it'd be great for the development of the economy, taxes, et cetera. So, you using the term shovel-ready, I'd probably disagree with the slope being an excuse why we couldn't access it off of the bypass. Question I have is, you've got the, and I'm following my notes, security fences around the van staging, the long trailer parking, what else has it got? The tractor parking, et cetera, but it's, the, the security fence is not around the employee parking, correct?
Is that correct, Jason? It is.
Okay.
I thought it was.
So, my, my point or thought is, if you've got 605 employee parking, which is not secured, are all the employees?
It is, it is.
There's a security fence around it as well? I thought there wasn't.
Employees have to go through the building.
Okay, so it is not. When you said yes?
No, it does not have security fence.
Okay.
Right, so they park on that lot, do they enter that lot off of Caden Lane?
So, yes, they, they would, yes, it is.
Okay, so...
This access point right there, there is an egress point as well that can be accessed.
Which I know we have a dance studio right there, and all I can picture is 500 cars driving fast to work because they're late and all that good stuff. So, to my point is, would that not be, could we have the trucks using Carley Drive, which is what you want? Could we not have the access for the, let me see, the van staging, which doesn't mandate or worry you for slopes? Maybe the tractor parking, but I, that's not, I'm not fully, no, but for sure, the van staging and the employee parking, instead of coming off of Caden Lane, why couldn't the vans and the employee parking come off the bypass?
Well, so, the, the van station is a gate-secured facility, and so, any access to the, basically, that area for, off the bypass would absolutely have a security gate. That's why I brought up the cul-de-sac that would have to occur right there. But again, I would be shocked if the state's gonna approve a security gate and cul-de-sac in that close proximity to the state access.
But you have the room to widen the bypass if needed.
I would still be surprised if they would put a cul-de-sac within 10, 15 feet of a actual, the, the kind of road right there, regardless.
Would you have a cul-de-sac?
You would have to right there. Basically, as soon as you're putting that security gate up there, you're gonna have to put a cul-de-sac to allow for that kind of turnaround.
Why put the security gate on McClellan Circle?
Because...
Bring it back on to the parking lot itself.
In, in his hypothetical, it was the van parking would basically access there as well.
What I was trying to do is bring the employee parking lot, and maybe the van, the van staging parking lot have their access off the bypass. The slope is not as bad as you say it is. Most people in this community who've been out there, if the commissioner's been out there, it's a pretty flat piece of property. You might have to add a little dirt, but trust me, the slope is not what you're saying.
The, I mean, we, we are adding over 15 feet of dirt in several different locations in order to get this up to...
Well, I'm looking at your map, not mine. I didn't draw this. It's 905 at the, 905 at the gate, 897.
Carley Drive, that's the security.
And now, if you look underneath the facility, it's not good.
Uh, go ahead, you're fine.
All of these, basically, you can see these slope lines that are underneath. They are tough to read.
I see 890 here. Yeah, I mean, that's not that bad.
You're 15 feet of fill in different locations.
You know what, I've seen a lot of development, Ball Homes has done it.
Absolutely.
Mr. Anderson did it across the street, well, it's not across the street, but close. And he's moved more dirt than I think about anybody I've seen in town in 10 years I've been here.
We are moving a ton of dirt on this site.
Do you swear a firm statement you're about to give, be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
I do.
And your name, please?
Jason Banks, Banks Engineering. Basically, the cross-section that Mr. Nicholson showed you is exactly correct. As I pointed out, in the, in the committee meeting, you can go back. I was trying to get to your cross-section. Okay. That's what you want. Anyway, where the truck, where the tractors enter the facility, that's coming down grading, and the stormwater dumps right on our property. So, we're picking that water up right there. Where we go through, security has to be flat. So, in the truck area, as everybody knows, they have to be able to maneuver.
Right.
So, we're on the, we've got storm boxes in the middle of the aisles, so that way we've got positive drains away from the building, positive drainage away from that way. So, we've got the building set based on this elevation, that pretty much sets the 897 contour. If you go to our cross-section and look at, look at that, see your 897 there? We're, our 897 is right there, get positive drainage away from the building, we have minimum slopes to keep water away from the building. We get to the curb, then you have that kind of elevation change to the...
Let me ask you this, then, if you put the van, and I, I'm a reasonable person, I dealt with Mr. Nicholson before, I try to be reasonable.
Absolutely, the employee parking.
The van staging, the trailers, the, the tractors, let's say you all use Carley for that, which is all under a secured fence, and you have a security gate that you've gotta go through, why not use the bypass just for the employee parking that has no security gate around it?
Because if we come off the bypass for any reason, we, we sever the van parking, and we have to have a certain number of van parking, plus, we're still done with crates.
There's not enough room to make a, a right turn? There's not enough room to make a, a right turn off the bypass into the, and have that asphalt pavement road that goes around the east side of the parking lot, kind of curve a little to the...
Yeah, we're dealing with 15% slopes. Ben, what's your maximum slope, 10%?
Yeah, percentage vision, it's...
10%. So, so I would feel, as an engineer, uncomfortable designing.
I just don't like 500 cars using this cul-de-sac. It just doesn't make a lot of sense.
That's 500 that are spread out all day.
Yeah, I understand.
All day. And had hours that nobody else is there. And I have, I have to make one point.
But to be a good neighbor, I think if you could bring your employee parking only off the bypass, which I really don't think is that hard, you're going to do a little grading.
They have looked at it, they have looked at 10 different ways to do this site, and there has not been a single one that...
That's really the only issue I have. If you could use Carley for your trucks, your trailers and your vans, and again, they're odd hours, I understand that. But for the employee parking to come off Caden Lane, which there's, I guess there's a couple businesses over there.
There's three curb cuts already there right now, and I do have to point out that that is 400 feet. That is it. So when you're coming and turning on there, even if you were late in trying to speed, it's only 400 feet.
It's just a bunch of cars coming through there, yeah, and...
I understand.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, you, you have to keep in mind too, that that 15% grade we're talking about has no vertical curves in it. There's a pinch point, it's doing this. And, and in engineering design, we have to roll those curves out. So that's going to make that distance off the bypass greater. As I told you in the meeting, if we do something like that, by the time you actually do it correctly, you're going to almost be in the building with your cul-de-sac.
Well, you don't need a cul-de-sac if you don't have a security gate, right?
We have to have a security.
Why do you have a security gate? It's employee parking that has no security fence.
Well, you've got, you've got public at a major intersection, that if they don't know what's going on there, they pull in there, they're in the parking lot.
But I mean, they can go in their parking lot, turn around.
You also have to have full...
I mean, honestly, if somebody's pulling in there and they look and they don't see a Walmart sign, they're probably not going to pull in there seeing that they see, you know, UPS, FedEx, Amazon, whatever it is. If they don't see the sign on the building, more than likely, most of the locals especially, aren't going to pull in there. Just kind of like pulling in the Toyota, you're not going to pull in the Toyota on any given day, even if you're not from here. You ain't going to pull in the Toyota's parking lot.
Sure. I will say this. If, if, while I know that you believe that this is absolutely possible, we wouldn't be fighting right now if this remotely was.
Do you think it's possible to have a road come off of the bypass for employees only?
For this type of facility?
For this type of facility off the bypass that, that would help kind of give a good balance of traffic. Trucks off of Carley, which, and trailers, trucks and vans off of Carley, which is, is the main purpose of moving all their product. And, but having, and they're in a security area which requires a security gate and a, and a security house. And then have the employee parking, which isn't secure anyway, so, you know, anybody can get there, whether it's you, me or the 500 employees, and not have a, a cul-de-sac, because you don't need it, because you don't have a security gate or house, to come off the bypass. Is it doable?
Anything, anything's possible, Mr. Jerry. I think if you're looking at some crazy structure like you'd see in an airport or something like that, to get people get down, circle, that is short-term, it would not allow, you wouldn't have the room for stacking for a bunch of people coming in.
Not a chance.
Everybody be stacked around this long curve.
Run the curve into the parking lot.
Vans and the car, if you...
Well, no, the vans wouldn't be in that same road. They would be a separate road. You'd have employee parking and driveway or entrance off the bypass, the vans, the trucks and the trailers off of Carley. So it'd kind of help balance it a little, instead of everybody using Carley and then all the employees using, worst-case scenario, well, not worst-case, the only scenario, Caden Lane.
Hey, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, we'd be on the consent agenda if it was possible.
I, I hear you.
You know, you all know me. I do not like fighting up here. If it was possible, we would have done it and we'd be on the consent agenda because we don't want to fight. It can't die in the jury's eyes.
I'm done though.
Well, I, well, I, while I agree that ideally it would have access for some portion from the bypass, honestly, it seems like in terms of the peak traffic, to your point, that time of 2:00 to 3:00 a.m. when they're coming, and this time of 7:00, both a.m. and p.m., it looks like, at least in terms of the industrial traffic, they are, you, your folks are arriving and leaving in pods of time that the industrial traffic has an impact. Now, I haven't, I don't know about the United Talent traffic. I will say that this pod of people right here, so you mentioned the vast majority are package employees. So you have 300 aroundabout employees, right? Across two shifts.
So we, we, basically 300 jobs that are tied to this facility, that includes drivers, that includes package handlers and whatnot. So it is not 300 people that are inside the facility at any given time at all.
Right, but if I were to take the van drivers, the package folks and the trailers, what would be that ratio on normal business? And then how does that compare to, and how would this be impacted by the seasonal business?
So the truck traffic very rarely would ever be coming in at the same time as any of the package handling traffic or at the same time as any type of the van. Those are almost, like, I think what it was, all the, I think it was 10% of the traffic even showed up during daylight hours for as far as truck traffic goes. So very little of that occurs whatsoever during daylight hours. There is packaging that shows up and basically kind of leaves at fairly set times and van drivers that are sporadic. And so the van drivers are kind of encouraged to have the flexibility to find out when exactly is the least, basically impactful time. And that's why we have kind of the averages that are kind of scattered in that little window because it depends on kind of what that individual location is looking like.
Yeah, because it doesn't look so sporadic for the autos arriving in that chunk of time and the vans arriving. I'm assuming that's vans coming back from deliveries to stage?
To and from.
Well, that's arrival, so it has to be vans coming back from deliveries, right, to stage?
I put the sheet down for you.
Okay. That's where it starts, at 3:00 p.m., 64 on down?
So, yes. So basically what you were talking about, the arrival, that is basically vans would be coming back in. So those vans are basically arriving, we are getting them loaded, and then they can eat their leave. Some of these would be essentially, you know, basically just coming to and from, depending on like what the hours were. Whether their route took them an hour and a half or whether it took them three hours. That's kind of the change right there.
So the autos arriving are those to staff the van delivery?
Most of the autos...
They look like corresponding numbers all the way down?
Correct. Most of those autos are kind of staggered with the package handling and van drivers.
Okay. So while I would agree with you that the bulk certainly is in those non-daylight hours that don't seem to overlap with the shift patterns of the other industrial traffic back there. There, I mean, it's a substantial number to add to that block of time that includes those shift times. Plus, I'm assuming that's probably United Talent's big time where they have parents coming in and out and dropping off kids, picking them up. So have you considered that? Obviously, they're in the traffic numbers, but their peak time, I don't think, was a part of specifically Paul called out there, right?
And so they're, like, looking at the website, it, it looked like they're kind of, the operating facilities, hours were at least kind of 9:00 to 12:00 and 4:00 to 8:30, and Monday through Thursday and 4:00 to 7:00 on Friday as well. And...
But most of that time, kids are in school normally, so chunk of it's going to be probably 3:30 to 7:00 or 8:00, 9:00?
If you were looking at this, you know, you are well over 50%, probably 75% of the actual traffic that is either accessing or leaving within that timeframe is, is basically not when they are open.
So explain that 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. shift. That's the one that I think through me.
So it, basically, it would be folks...
2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., which I had no problem at all with.
Right.
If you play 12 of this two, I think that helps.
I didn't. Yeah, explain the 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m.
So there is another kind of shift of, of kind of package handlers that are arriving and doing some similar activities to what occurred at the 2:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. period. Most of them are there from 2:00 to 9:00 p.m. So you are not having people coming and going, the majority of, basically, the traffic that is there.
They're there before 2:00 a.m. and then they're usually leaving a little after 9:00 p.m.
Correct. And there are van drivers that are coming and going on those sites, and those are very variable, and we want them to be flexible.
The van drivers come up and down Carley, not on Caden Lane.
Correct.
I'm concerned about Caden Lane.
The van drivers are arriving and leaving on Caden, not, I mean, not Caden, Carley.
Carley, correct.
They can do both, correct?
No, they shouldn't be able to come through Caden at all. It doesn't look like.
You show me like where United Talent is relative to this map?
Yes, I think they do.
Okay.
You swear a firm statement you're about to make to be the truth to the best of your information and belief?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, so there's two planned entrances, one dedicated for van traffic and then one dedicated for trailer traffic, to answer your question.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
There's two dedicated entrances. So you have one dedicated to van traffic at the top of the page towards the bypass from Caden Lane. And then you, obviously, you have one dedicated specifically to truck traffic on Carley Drive.
I did just see and realize there's that security gate up through Caden Lane, past the employee parking lot.
And it's simply a function of maneuvering and coordination on site. So obviously, you have the docks towards the west side of the site, and then obviously you have the distribution facility on the top half of the page, which is, I believe, east to the bypass.
So the vans come in on Caden and the trailers come in on Carley?
Yes, ma'am.
Your name, please?
Robbie Mcatee.
And United Talent is accessed via TAF?
So I did one point, there is this secondary access point for employee parking that is on Carley itself. And so not, not every car is coming and is going down strictly Caden Lane.
The employees access, where's the other?
There's a secondary access point right there.
Uh huh.
That is directly into employee parking in order to make sure.
The primary one though is off Caden Lane?
Well, it's, it's your choice. It truly deals with...
Right, but there's, there's two options you could, I guess my point would be, so if I, if I make the assumption that this block of time here is also the United Talent's major block of time, and then I look at that, it means that all of this, and that they access it via Caden Lane, it means all this chunk of people here that are in that time have the possible, well, part of them, 50% of them are going to be on Caden Lane for sure because that's the only choice they have. The others might split 50/50. I don't know what's going to be more coming.
Is there a walkway from the employee parking lot over the fence? Or is there a security gate they have to go through or the admin office?
Into the security building.
There are secure turnstiles for them.
I don't see them. Are they just near the administrative offices?
It's, yes, so they'll be located here. Obviously, this is just a preliminary plan, so I think you guys took receipt of a fully engineered setup.
No, we don't get the big rolls. We, we get the small little picture here that I need my glasses for.
So there is planned turnstile access, which is secure into the facility.
We're, we're, right roughly, if you don't mind.
It's going to be right about...
Okay, right, near the admin buildings.
So obviously, right here, you can see these patches are a little bit different, so this is dedicated handicap parking there as well.
So if you're going to park, you probably don't want to come and park on that Carley Drive, kind of that long little skinny drip. You want to park in the big lot because you're going to be closer to that turnstile.
Which means in all likelihood, 99% of that traffic...
I mean, I'm just talking that little long stretch here off of Carley between Carley and the big parking lot, which might be 60 spots. No one's going to want to park there because they're going to have to walk all the way up to the admin building.
But if I'm leaving, if I'm leaving, I'm going there.
Yeah, you can enter through there. I mean, some will, some won't.
I bet a majority will leave through there. You're taking one turn, right onto Carley and then you're on...
Then somewhere their cars park.
Yeah, it probably depends.
If you're close to that admin doors, I'm taking a right and going straight down there.
Close to the grocery store or away?
I worked at Toyota for 26 years. Everybody wants to park close to the grocery store.
Exactly. There you go, Mary.
Fight over them.
And pay for them.
And pay for them, they do. United away donations, not...
Yeah, exactly.
Pay, pay, but yeah, donation to good cause.
So, any other questions for Mr. Nicholson or his group of support?
I've got a question for Mr. Nicholson or Mr. Setzer. I think Joe said that you all had met with the Royal Spring, and what did they have to say?
It was an approval. There are four conditions that basically dealt with the treatment of water, and those are part of the conditions of approval, and we are not arguing with them at all.
Okay. And Joe, do we have, have any idea when, when they'll be able to hook up to the sewer?
I do not. No, they still have to apply and submit their water and sewer plan, so...
Do you all know a timeline yet when you want to, we approve this tonight, when you'll start building and what?
As soon as possible. We, we would have that application in.
We will start that process as, as quick as possible. This facility does not use lots of sewage, so that's one good thing to have going forward.
But you still have to connect to the...
Still have to.
We know, we've met the opening, so...
What are they telling you?
We're, we're in talks right now to, to hook in upon to Caden Court for our sewer.
And there's sewer right, right down the road.
Yeah, but you can't hook up right now. They're not taking any new customs, are they?
Uh, that's not been our, that's not what we've been told.
Go to the different places?
We're, we're under 1,300 gallons per day, which is approximately three households. So this is not a sewer user at all.
Bathrooms.
Thank you.
They got a bathroom to park.
I got one more question. I got one more.
Any other questions, Mr. Singer?
Just kidding, I'm just kidding. So I keep going back to this block of time here, and I understand it is not as big as the times you've been able to isolate from the industrial traffic and also from this traffic here. But what opportunities exist? I don't know what the driver, the van driver schedules are, but I'm assuming these autos coming are for the vans that are going out and vice versa, right?
So the P and D vans, this gives you the time that basically your, your typical kind of arrival and departure times.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah. I'm assuming though these, there's a correlation between the 36 and the 36. 36 autos are arriving, those are the 36 vans that will soon be departing?
No, so the vans are stay on site.
But they're depart for delivery, they are departing for delivery some too, right?
So yes, so on this, where you're seeing the departures and you're seeing the returns of the vans, those are the vans. Yes, the drivers have to get to our site.
Okay.
And so they will park in the employee parking lot, load the vans.
Okay, so then they depart, okay, then those vans arrive. So then that's the crossover traffic there. So then it's not happening at the same time, right? Because this person that's driving this van is...
Well, and the driver, basically, I believe it also that they are loading the vans as well.
There's also, there's also autos that arrive at the site and actually maneuver, put them around sites.
Uh huh.
It's not a one-for-one, you could, if you talk about autos arriving.
Okay.
So what if you move this lot? This looks like a lot of empty space. Where do you move this lot, 15 feet? Look how wide this lot is. These are only vans.
And I have to point out again, you're talking about 60 truck, or 60 cars in an hour on 48 acres of industrial land.
Yeah, and I guess what I'm guess, what I'm asking actually, yeah, so 60 cars in that, it's not double that though. It's not those happening because it's not a one-for-one. You know what?
Not at all.
And I, I will say, I preface it with, I agree that, I think this is a, would be a great thing for the community and we need to find a way to, to try to make it work. I'm just looking for any opportunity to minimize, obviously, the impact to...
I fully understand, and I will say it again, like, if it was possible, we wouldn't be here fighting. I assure you that. We just can't find a way to make it work, no matter what we do or try.
Do you have a ratio of how the seasonal traffic would change? As an example, this peak time here, what those numbers would theoretically look like based off of a normal facility this size and what you would see in terms of the uptick seasonally?
So also what you have, that is for full clarification, those traffic counts are at capacity. So when we're talking about at capacity, we're talking about 10, 15 years down one. Those aren't necessarily the actual traffic counts that you're going to see.
Day one.
From day one in a section of the facility. But to assume, I guess, the volume of seasonal handlers that are going to be coming in, it's really a function of their business operation. I couldn't give you an estimation on that. It's not shared with me at the end of the day. That's the best information I can give you on these actual traffic counts. So when we prepare these, the way she can do her study, they're built to full phase, so you actually have an actual idea of what they are at days in, should we hit these targets.
Okay. So would that mean that the seasonal workers, if that's at full capacity, the seasonal workers can do no more than exceed these? Is that...
That would be the assumption. Again, this is in 15 years.
Right, right.
Any more questions? You want me to leave up the...
Any other question? Oh, well, we got questions, a lot of people here do want to have a question.
I knew that. It was whether you wanted to go ahead and ship to them.
Yeah, it does seem a little warm in there.
I feel like it turned off of the timing thing. Yeah, that's why I feel hot.
I, I thought it was just me, Mrs. Singer.
It's getting a little bit more sheepy each time I ask one.
Alright, um, Mr. Nicholson, you're done. We're done asking questions of you, so for now, oh, trust me, we'll get to you. People who want to speak on behalf of the community, for it or against... People who wanna speak on behalf of the community, for it or against it, come on up, state your name and who you're representing, and we'll continue on.
My name's Brian Harris, one oh one Caden Lane, we are United Talent. Just to give you a little bit of background, started the company in nineteen ninety-eight as a school project at Georgetown College, and bought property in the industrial park in two thousand and two, and then we did an expansion in two thousand and eight. When we did the expansion, we were growing rapidly, and typically in a normal season, we service around six hundred and fifty to seven hundred students in gymnastics, cheerleading, dance, and the performing arts, Scott County community and surrounding communities. And that, for us, you know, obviously, I think this is, this would be great for Scott County, I'm not saying that this is not something that's incredible, we just wanna be considered on Caden Lane. Our peak hours are three o'clock in the afternoon until about nine. We operate Monday through Friday, and then we have some weekend events as well, where we're doing things on the weekends, but the issue for us is we only operate business during those hours, that's, that's basically our entire business. So, you know, kids are in school, they come to United Talent after school, and our issue is we have grown in this facility, and parking for us, Caden Lane becomes an overflow parking spot for us. So our, on a typical afternoon, especially at the five o'clock, six o'clock hour range, we have cars that come in, potentially drop their kids off and or park, and or, last year in COVID, they didn't come in the facility, but typically they would come in the facility, they park in our parking spot, which you can see in this, the Caden Lane Court, we're the property right to the right of Caden Lane. We have a limited parking area, and then Caden Lane is utilized for overflow parking. And it's not all night, you know, they come, they, they stay for an hour class, they leave, it's not like it's, you know, we're parking there forever. Recently, we've had a, a little bit of concern with Vutek, because they rerouted all of their trucking up Caden Lane and around to the other areas, so it used to not be that way. We, we, we basically lived on a cul-de-sac court area since we existed there, and that was kind of a, you know, a nice area for us to be able to do that. Since Vutek has rerouted their trucking up Caden Lane, we've been pushed to only the right side of Caden Lane as far as overflow parking. So that tightens us up too, and now potentially with this expansion, with the center here that's gonna be developing, again, I think this is great for the community, but it's, it's really bad for us. So I just, I wanna be considered, I don't, I don't wanna say we don't want this project to happen, I wanna be considered on Caden Lane, where we are and how our business operates. We are twenty-three seasons in, again, this was kind of a childhood dream, building and developing a business right out of college, and we wanna continue that business and the service that we're providing to our Scott County community. We had to get a conditional use permit, obviously, it's an industrial park, but for our type of operation, these are the only type of facilities that kind of facilitate what we do. So I really appreciate your time tonight, I know there's a couple other people that may wanna say something. We're just concerned with where we are with business and continuing growth, so thanks for your time.
Can you show on that map where those overflow parkings on Caden Lane is?
Yeah, so the court and the cul-de-sac, again, between typically the hours of five, six, maybe to seven thirty, the right side of the court, all the way around the right side of the court. Now, we're, and honestly, there's several nights where they're on the other side too, and we have issues with the Vutek trucks, and we've been, you know, we, we have a great relationship with Vutek, they've allowed us to use their parking lot on the other side, so a lot of our parents can park over there, which is nice, we have been working together. And I think, I think the thing that's most concerning to me is in the traffic study, it looks like it was conducted not during our peak season, our peak season is August through May. In the summertime, we don't have the same type of traffic that we typically have in a full season when school's in. When school's in session, we are slamming, six hundred fifty, seven hundred people. We also, we had COVID that we were contending with last year, so we were only operating at about fifty percent all year long. And that was, you know, last year was a damaging year for us based on that, but we're feeling like the rebound is probably coming, hopefully August, as long as COVID kinda stays at bay.
I think it was May first, May sixth, twenty twenty-one, right? Yeah, it was published, I think, in June, but it says the traffic counts were done May sixth, so.
While school was in.
Yep, still typically.
COVID though.
COVID, we're operating at fifty percent.
They still were on lockdown.
So in two thousand and nineteen, we're operating at a hundred percent, hopefully twenty twenty-one, we're operating at a hundred percent, that's, we're hoping.
What would your clients, number of clients average here versus a standard year?
So probably about three hundred people versus about six fifty to seven hundred, substantial.
You have basically one car per student, or a little less?
It depends, there's some carpooling, you know, some kids ride together, but it's, it's, you know, three o'clock, it's hard for parents to get there, but we do have classes happening, four o'clock, kinda the same thing, five o'clock hits, we have like two and a half hours where we have to get everything in, pretty much. And then no one wants to be there at nine o'clock at night, so they wanna be home by seven thirty or eight. So that's the hard part about our business, we can't do a lot through the day, I mean, you, you do a traffic study at nine AM, it's crickets, but you do a traffic study at five or six, it's substantial what you see on Caden Lane especially. And then just, our, our biggest concern is obviously our kids and our students, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna see a child or someone get hurt, you know, that's, that's my top number one priority.
How many employees do you have?
So we have six full-time employees, and we have about twenty-five that are part-time employees. And most of the part-time employees are anywhere from sixteen, seventeen-year-olds to college kids, and then our, our full-time staff members.
Most of them are driving too.
Yes.
How many parking spots do you have on your lot?
I'd have to look exactly, it's definitely not sufficient for those two hours, it's sufficient for all the other time.
But those. Hours being four to six, or?
Yeah, probably, you know, somewhere between that four to seven thirty mark is when it really gets challenging.
But is, is there room to add more parking on?
So I did a preliminary development plan for parking, and it's designed, and it has been drawn, it's gone through planning and zoning, the situation for us is, we only operate from the four to eight, and for me to spend two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars for a parking lot makes difficult, you know, it's, it's a difficult situation to be in, we're not, you know, we're, we're kinda the little guys in the room, we're, we're a small business, we've worked hard to get to where we've gotten, but it's not, you know, it's not substantial for us to be able to put in that type of investment for, if we were operating like that all day long, absolutely.
Brian, is that grassy area?
Yes.
Joe, would we, could we do an exception and do gravel? And I mean, again, ninety-five percent of the time, the gravel wouldn't be used, it's at four to eight overflow. We've done gravel parking lots before in industrial parks, and, I mean, I, I'd be an exception, we'd have to, we'd have to do it as a.
That would be, I mean, substantially cheaper, I don't know what.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is if you pour down gravel, level it, he'd have a, kind of an overflow gravel lot for that.
Yeah, there's another solution.
Go ahead, step up and talk.
Yeah, it's granted the exception, obviously, we got a lot of material to move out there, should have some excess material to help them out in this green space area, so we can work out a side agreement between us, and obviously accommodate a parking expansion for them, to help alleviate some of their on-street parking on Caden Lane, which kinda gets them away from Vutek too, so that's a.
Yeah, 'cause that worries me, I, I didn't even think about Mr. Harrison's problem, is you've got people parking on, on Caden Lane, kids swinging those doors open, I don't have anybody at, at United Talent for the record, my youngest is fourteen, it's a boy, and he does, he does football, not dance.
I have all boys too, I don't have.
But I can picture a kid jumping out of a minivan and just jumping right in front of a vehicle, and, and gotta be nothing worse than the kid getting hit.
It's ultimately, obviously, I don't have, have access to the plan that he submitted to your engineering team, but we can get something worked out to accommodate you guys to make it a safe access point for their kids, if they're gonna be showing up every day, and that's what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else wanna speak, come on up?
Across Caden Lane, on here, it shows Dorstown Church of God, do they just own property, or is there a?
Yeah, just the property, I, I, it's Pastor Steve, I've spoken with him several times, they've had plans, but they're not really moving on anything, I know they put a little drive area in, but they're not ready to develop a, a church yet.
Come on up and state your name and address, and, and, everybody's been sworn in over here?
Yes, so good evening, my name is Jeff Doninger, and I live at five oh four Mallard Point Drive, so I do have a considerable drive in when I go to United Talent. My daughter is twelve years old, has been dancing there for nine years, so I have seen the increase, the change at Vutek, and the impact that it's had on all of us going in there to drop off our kids. With the considerable drive that I have, if my daughter has one or two classes, it's not feasible for me to drop her off, drive home, come back and pick her up. So, the fact that I don't have a place to go while she's in dance, you know, on these peak times, you know, there's nights when I'm actually almost on Carley Drive in the drop-off lane, because we've got so many picking up and so many dropping off. And again, the main thing that we talked about and that was said was about the children's safety, because they do have a schedule that they have to meet, well, if you're not up at the drop-off point in time for them to get out of the car and go to dance, well, you know, a twelve-year-old that wants to dance, she's gonna go dance, so she's gonna hop out of that car and run across, not only potentially dropping out on Vutek traffic, but crossing a parking lot full of cars. I did pick up something earlier tonight that I thought was pretty interesting, with the development of a subdivision, once you're at certain number of homes, you gotta have a second access to and from. We're not having that, there is one way in and one way out of the industrial park, and especially United Talent. So if there is some kind of emergency, you know, do I need to bring a tent? I mean, you know, seriously.
Pretty much.
So, you know, as a concerned parent, I mean, we don't wanna lose the community, we would love to have in addition to the community to provide a lot more jobs, a lot more growth, think it's a great thing for Scott County, but if we can do some kind of agreement and get some kind of help, you know, that would make myself feel extremely safe for my daughter. And that's the thing that we're, we're trying to, trying to achieve with this tonight, so. I appreciate y'all's time, I appreciate y'all's input.
Thank you.
Would that take care of the drop-off and issue as well, I mean, that's the same spot you're talking about.
Yeah.
I don't know what the drop-off point would like.
Well, we, we have actually done some discussing about, you know, if we could do some kind of, you know, there's very limited space around that United Talent building. You know, if we were to add a gravel road that you could drive in, drop off, and then go to a parking lot, you know, that would help, something like that, but, you know, there's a lot of plans, you know, these guys have done an extreme amount of work to come up with the plans that they got for a wonderful facility. So yeah, I mean, if we had some type of, but if we can work hand in hand, then I think, you know, we might be on the right track.
To allow the gravel, right? Through Chairman Solsky?
Uh, you know, well, what we've done in the past in industrial parks or business parks is we've allowed a gravel parking lot in lieu of an asphalt or concrete parking lot, so if we could do the same here without Mr. Harris having to spend three hundred thousand to do a paved parking lot, I mean, that's what I.
Yeah, they would have to come back.
Yeah, but the thing is, is what I don't wanna do tonight, which we would normally do, is do a postponement until y'all come to an agreement, I don't wanna do that today, but Charlie, how can we add a, we can't add.
I don't think you can add a condition, but I'm certainly standing in front of you, putting it on the record.
Yeah, right, and that's what I'm thinking, as long as they put it on the record, Charlie, and we hold them to it, I hate to, you know, I hate to say.
Guys, I plan on coming back in front of y'all a whole lot, I'm, I'm a liar now, I'm a liar forever.
We have, we really can't require things, obviously, that aren't in our regs, this is probably not. If they offer that as an inducement, if you will, along with having complied with everything, then I think that's perfectly fine, plus, keep in mind, this is a preliminary.
Yes, we have to come back.
So they gotta come back, well, if they come back and they've not done anything they've assured us they do, well, let's cast doubt. I'm sure that's not gonna happen.
It's not gonna happen.
All right.
Y'all see me too often.
Thank you, great point, Mr. Perkins, I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Uh, anybody up, come on up, ma'am, and state your name and.
I'm not sworn in.
Oh, do you swear affirm the statement you're about to make to be the truth, best of your information and belief?
I do.
Thank you, ma'am, what's your name?
Ann Graham.
Ann Graham?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm speaking on behalf of Bren Gardner Farms, which is the adjacent property to this property on the other side of the railroad track, we are down slope from their stormwater, and I have not heard anything tonight about stormwater runoff.
Ben, would you wanna talk about that a little bit?
I can, just a little, as an engineer, if you can take a hold of you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So they, they are showing two, well, darker green, green spots up there, those are two large, large basins, they're gonna contain the extra runoff, they gotta reduce rates, they've only got one outlet point for the site, and it is limited underneath the railroad tracks, so they, for themselves, that flood themselves, they're gonna have to, have to contain, slow this water down, someplace for it to go. I do anticipate an increase, and there's gonna be an increase in volume down, downstream, but we don't, we don't control volume, we control peak flows, we do ask them to infiltrate an amount of their site for groundwater recharge, helps feed our streams, feed the aquifer, that kinda thing. I have seen their preliminary, and what they're showing preliminary is they can, they can reduce it to pre-development rates. But I, yes, they will, that over time, they'll see more water down, downstream, it's, they're adding impervious area, so it's a.
Mr. Bringwater, would you wanna step up here, and we need you on the microphone, thanks. Do you swear in?
Sorry, I haven't sworn in either.
Ed, now you know better.
Do you swear affirm the statement you're about to give to be the truth, best of your information and belief? Thank you, sir.
Is it too preliminary for us to go over all the, how much water's actually gonna come, you know, come to the other side of the railroad tracks for us at one time?
I don't have those numbers on me, the exact amounts.
Well, nothing's going across the railroad tracks, we've, we've got a pipe going under the railroad tracks.
I know, I know, we're, we're, we had the property, we had the pipe right on the other side, just dumping out our farm right.
Yes, what we're gonna do is, as required by your all's ordinances and subdivision regulations, is we've got to control the rate of runoff.
Right.
We're, as Ben said, we can't control the, the amount, but we are doing infiltration, and we are doing water quality. And, and our basins are sized for both, we had to make our basins larger than they would normally be, as Ben said, because that pipe constricts the water, so it backs up on our site, so we've taken all that into consideration.
Are you also considering that you're gonna receive all the water from, I guess, ninety percent of the development?
Certainly, we've, we've pulled all the watersheds, pulled and done all the numbers, and we're, we're confident we meet all the regulations.
So hopefully, Ed, it should be an improvement, hopefully.
Hope I don't need a boat then.
Any other questions or comments from any of the folks?
That was one thing, I, I knew I'd forgotten something when I basically stopped talking for about ten seconds, and this is exactly what it was, right now, there aren't really any basins in the industrial park. Since they were mostly done on, basically, pre, the, the current rules where you have to monitor that post-development runoff must be basically equivalent to pre-development conditions, we are having to pick up the slack for the park that is not already doing that. And so this is why we've had to oversize these basins so much, is because we're basically capturing a whole lot of water that's not ours, that's basically just dumping on this site, and so we are doing it, we're, and we have to show our math.
Thank you, Mr. Nicholson, any other questions for anybody, or for the community that came out? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
What'd you say?
I'll, I'll try to make a motion, do my best.
Go ahead, Miss. Absolutely, go ahead, dear.
I will make a motion for the approval of the preliminary development plan with the conditions stated by the planners, and the addition of the understanding that there is going to be an outside. Um, and the addition of the understanding that there is going to be an outside agreement prior to us approving the final development plan.
How about if you just added, put in there that recognizing their, uh, their offer and their assurance that they will work with United?
Recognizing their offer and assurance.
As discussed here.
I need to strike, just. Need to strike condition number one.
Yes, that, that's what I would ask for clarification.
What's condition?
What is condition one?
Condition one is the access point of.
Oh, okay. Striking condition one.
Thank you.
Is that gibberish?
No, that was good. So we've got a motion by Miss Singer.
I'll check it.
And, uh, second by, I'll put the Steve Smith. Uh, let's do a roll call just because, and it's our last one. Uh, we'll start with, uh, Charlie Mifflin.
Yes.
And this is to approve. Um, Dewan Garrett.
Yes.
Dan Smith.
Yes.
Uh, Mary Singer.
Yes.
Uh, David Vest.
Yes.
Uh, Steve Smith.
Yes.
Uh, James Stone, I left you almost for last.
Yes.
And the chair votes, yes. I, I'm not real excited not having the access off the bypass, but I appreciate y'all working with the, the neighbors, and hopefully, you know, it'll, it'll be a great. So welcome to the community, at least to start. Thank you. Um, applicant, come up and sign with, uh, Ernie Perkins.
I've got it heading up here.
Exactly. I'm thinking, trying to get my. I think, I think that's all everything. I got some questions. I got some more questions.
Oh, now, what, so we make a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.